All right, let's call this meeting the order of the Sacramento City Council. Please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Kaplan.
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Telemontes.
Here.
Councilmember Pluckebom.
Here.
Councilmember Maple.
Here.
Mayor Protemgata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
Here.
And Mayor McCarty.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple, can you please lead us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge?
Please rise if you are able. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands, to the original people of this land, the Nisanan people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Putun and Two Peoples, and the people of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe. May we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us today on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather today in the act of practice of acknowledgement and appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous peoples' history, contributions, and lives. Remain standing, salute, and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay.
So, Mayor, we did not have a closed session prior to this meeting, so I'm safe to assume that we do not have a city attorney's report out.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, consent calendar.
So, I have five speakers for public comment on the consent calendar. Do council members have any questions or comments on the items? Councilmember Vang?
I'd like to make a comment on item 12.
Councilmember Kaplan?
Questions on item four, comment on six and 14.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Comments on number 11.
Okay, seeing no more punched up, but let's start with Councilmember Kaplan. Do you want to do four, six, and then 14? Thank you.
Thank you. For item four, just a couple of questions. This is regarding community facility districts and our special tax administration. Is there anybody here that could possibly answer a question or two?
Hi, Brian.
You know, Natomas has a lot of CFDs. I have gotten a question or two that I just want to highlight right now about confusions between a CFD and an EIFD, as a couple EFIDs are coming in front of council. Can you just briefly say why these are different, or can they be both done at the same time, and what is the difference?
Sure. Let me, thank you for the question, Councilmember. So, let me start with kind of CFD, and then shift over to kind of the difference between EIFD. So, a CFD is Community Facilities District, is formed under the Melrose Act of 1982. We have a number of different CFDs in the city. They have been formed for a couple of different purposes. One is services and maintenance, so things like park maintenance. So, those services are intended to, not supplant, but they're to be additive to the services that the city already provides. Some of the other CFDs that have been formed include capital, capital nature, capital improvements, things like, we work with the city, with developers, so Greenbrier, Delta Shores, others. The developers construct their improvements, and the city forms the CFD as a way to form the, a mechanism to issue bonds. And the bonds are then used to reimburse or acquire their improvements for the public benefit for either that area or kind of that portion of the city.
And that can be for like, infrastructure, sewer, water?
Absolutely. So, whatever the eligible improvements are that are kind of specified in the formation documents, so it could be wide-ranging water, wastewater, it could be road improvements, it could be a whole wide range of things. And one of the distinctions of a CFD versus an EIFD is a CFD is a special tax. So, it's the imposition of a tax that's paid by property owners within that CFD. So, if a CFD has 100 taxable parcels, there's a configuration, a formula, a methodology by which the tax is imposed and levied. And so, it's distinction because a CFD is considered a legal separate entity. So, it's separate and apart from the city. While the city issues the bonds and issues the, and manages the debt, the debt that's incurred by the CFD is not on the city's books. Now, let's kind of pivot over to an EIFD. An EIFD is an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. And essentially, over the last 10, 12 years, post dissolution with, in January of 2012, with ABX-126, and most recently with Assembly Bill 1484, there have been different redevelopment tools that have taken place. And one of them is the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. And essentially, what it allows is completely different than a CFD. It allows for the growth in the base revenue. So, if an EIFD is formed in a part of a city, it, we create what's known as the base year, the base taxation. And so, the incremental revenue that's, the tax revenue that's generated in year one, year five, year 10, that could be used to fund different things like capital improvements. And one of the distinctions there is, it's not a new tax. It's already part of, you know, the property owner's tax. It's essentially taking a portion of assessed revenue that would otherwise go to the city and general fund, and reallocating it towards that part of the city for, you know, whatever dedicated services or improvements that are envisioned. So, distinct is one's new, one's new and additive to property owners in that area, one is existing just by way of virtue of property owners paying their tax bill. The growth in assessed revenue is essentially kind of the mechanism by which either pay go, or a means to issue bonds and build a bond against that revenue stream.
Thank you, and I know that's a law, but considering this council is going to be looking at EFIDs and questions kind of come up, that could be confusing, but you could have an EFID and a CFD on one parcel and piece of property.
Absolutely. So, for example, you know, the consideration for rail yard CFD, right? So, the CFD was formed a number of years ago. In 2022, we issued bonds for it. And a couple of years ago, the city, we formed what is known as, previously known as the rail yards stadium area EFD. And right now, there are efforts to amend the boundary of the rail yards stadium area EFD to be kind of coterminous with a CFD. So, to your point, Councilmember, yes, the CFD and EIFD can be stacked on top of one another.
And I just want to thank you, because sometimes finances, you know, that's not my bailiwick, but I think sometimes we need to discuss it out in the open, because there are questions and concerns. So, I just wanted to use this as a, as an instance that there is nobody better than Brian who can answer our questions, if anything comes up in that. But I am good with the, the item four. I just wanted to use this as an opportunity to clarify a couple of things. So, thank you, Brian. On item six, I just want to highlight, and again, thank the city of Sacramento for partnering with their START program, with the Robles School District. We are going to be providing before and after-school services to a total of 1,000 kids. Over 90% of the Robles School District is free and reduced, and this is truly an area where we can help provide enrichment for our students most in need, so they can succeed in life. And then, on item 14, I just want to highlight, because if you look at this, this is our 2025 Annual Weed and Rubbish Abatement Notification. Just to remind council members, you know, I found out I have 738 parcels that need to do weed abatement and cut their grass, that this is just the notice, but the fines will come back in a couple of weeks. So, now owners have a couple of weeks to do this before they will be fined. So, council members, if you've got anybody that, that needs to make sure we reduce our fire hazard, this is really about reducing fire hazard, that they can do so in the next couple of weeks without being fined. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson, item 11.
Thanks, Mayor Perk. I will add a ditto on the comments on item six by Councilmember Kaplan. We're very, very pleased to have START and the Robles School District, for all the reasons she mentioned. I wanted to take a moment to underscore the action that I anticipate we'll take with respect to, to item 11, which is the D2 Thrives Initiative. And this really is something I think the entire council should take pride in and, and recognize. It is the next step, following the adoption of the Forward Together Action Plan from last April, that the council approved, and it is a strategic roadmap, really, designed to revitalize the Marysville and Del Paso Boulevard commercial corridors. There are a number of noteworthy benefits that will come as we vote today to award $330,000 to a variety of community partners for specific activities to implement the, implement the plan. And it represents really the next step, not, not the ultimate step, but the next, the next step in our efforts to, to bring back North Sacramento, bring back these corridors in particular. So, some of the, some of the benefits include economic revitalization, enhanced community well-being, prevention of displacement, increased community engagement, long-term investment, improved infrastructure, increased, increased local business support, among, among others. And so, I am delighted to be here, to be part of this today, but I want to also make sure I share thanks, because there's lots of moms and dads for, for this effort, and a number of them are out here in, in the audience. But I want to recognize the Neighborhood Development Action Team and Mikel, who is taking care of a new baby somewhere. Oh, oh, well, maybe on relief from the baby duty for the moment. And Denise Malvetti, who I think, I thought I saw out there. Yes, there she is. And a number of other city staff. I see Leslie Fritsch, and I know there are a number of you out there, and community partners. This, this effort that we're continuing with today will be led by Culture, who many of you are familiar with, by the Mutual Assistance Network, the Del Paso Boulevard Business Improvement District, or Del Paso Boulevard Partnership, Sierra Service Project, and Community, Sierra Community Land Trust, among a host of others. So, it is truly from, from the ground up and out. So, and that's the way we build a community, that's the way we build strength, and that's the way we, we build sustainability over time. So, I want to express great thanks to all the partners. I am very, very excited about this. See, can't you tell how excited I am? And, and looking forward to all the good work that's going to come from this. And finally, just want to repeat my thanks to, to my fellow council members for the actions of, of the past, and the actions of today, and the actions of the future to invest in District Two and in these commercial corridors. Thanks, Mayor.
And Councilmember Vang, you had comments on item 12?
Yes, I have comments on item 12, and just wanted to echo Councilmember Dickinson on item 11 on the grant agreement in District Two. Thank you again to city staff's hard work. Shout out to former Councilmember Sean Tao as well for that, and so great that we have a champion in D2, making sure that this is continuing. It's so important to make sure that we don't leave these communities and these corridors behind, because when District Two does well, all of Sacramento does well. And so, congratulations, Councilmember Dickinson, and to the District Two community. I wanted to just comment on item 12 to the same staff as well. This is regarding the Medevue Community Farmers Market Operator. I represent the Medevue community in South Sacramento, and there's many families and household that lives in that community without vehicles, that are low income, and they're more than half a mile away from a supermarket or fresh produce. And this farmers market is something that we launched last summer, and I want to take this moment to thank Mikel, our Senior Development Project Manager, who's actually overseeing this food initiative. I want to say thank you to Samantha Elise Thong, my Director of Strategic Engagement, our Medevue Farmers Market Committee, made of residents in the Medevue community, that really helped guide this process. And a special shout out to Assemblymember Stephanie Nguyen, who actually helps secure state funding through the California Department of Food and Ag. The Medevue Farmers Market was launched last summer, like I shared. We completed our first phase, but then we had to launch an RFP to make sure that we use the remaining grant until 2027 and seek a long-time operator. Really excited that Alchemist was chosen to be our long-term operator. They do incredible work in the community. They operate CalFresh booth at farmers markets, so that our CalFresh families can access, can use their EBT card to purchase healthy and culturally relevant food. And so, I'm just really excited to get this going and to launch the farmers market again this spring, and just really want to thank city staff and community members that led this project to make it happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have six speakers on this. Simon Hayek on item two. Simon, please feel free to line up in the aisle. After Simon is McWorthy, then Henry Harry.
Greetings, Council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to be appointed to the Active Transportation Commission today. I especially want to thank you, Mr. Mayor, because I think it showed a lot of leadership as far as I included my involvement in the opposition in the election last year, and did a lot of work to get Dr. Flo elected. And so, I think it's really, it's really powerful to be reaching out to the other side and including us on your commission. So, I want to thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I want to give a shout out to Lynette Hall and her team in the City Management Academy, which I participated in last year and helped me get inspired there. Were you a graduate, my, or?
I was. City Management Academy, Plant Academy.
Very good, well.
Plant Academy.
Simba Wong's here.
Nice, nice. Wonderful, and my Working Families Party champion. So, one other shout out, the other, a few weeks ago, we spoke about the Trucksel Road Bridge, and really wanted to thank Lisa for, for her comments that day. Moving forward, I would like to see, you know, that our city streets are some of our, a lot of people are being killed, being injured. I've personally been hit and run myself, and as a top priority, as the mayor's appointee, not just representing my own district, but representing the entire city, top priority for me will be to find the ways that we can make our Roseville Road campus safe. I want to give a, there was a woman, Wendy, Wendy Connell, was killed in January, a resident at that campus. It was common in the campaign last year.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is McWorthy on item four, Henry Harry on five and seven. McWorthy's on four and seven appears.
When people don't educate their constituents, that's ignorance. Now, this tax within the tax, special tax, how do we track that? Do you have to file a lawsuit on how that money is spent? Sad, sad to see that you got taxed within the tax. That should have come out when the suit of Bank of America was utilizing the escrow money. Then we go to number seven. How can you say that you going to deal with bonds and you're going to keep up that property when you bid peddling? This is called bid peddling. We would like to know how many companies that contribute to your campaign, so we can give this stuff to the right people when they come to town and show that this is abuse of bonds. What is the constitutionality to that when it's bid peddling within a city, and you got little, like these little small bids with silencers? Why can't the person get a permit to get a contract? No, because they didn't contribute to your bid, to your campaign. I wonder where is the constitutionality to that? Did anybody file a constitutionality? We know we ain't got no attorneys here in this town, corporate attorneys. All the corporate attorneys somewhere for, working for some form of government. That's what we are looking for, the corporate attorneys, that we can file our suit against here on freedom of speech. Where we see stuff going here, that's ridiculous. We can't even track the money. And then you're going to have a tax within a tax highest explain? What about the escrow money with that? Bond, didn't I tell the previous mayor? You can't survive off bonds? You just said that you had to sell some of those bonds, because they went down. Wake up, people, the time coming.
I give you your comments. Henry Harry on five and seven, then Rochon Davis on item 11.
Thank you, members of the council. On item five, you show a map of the city land that is proposed to be used downtown. I just want to point out that I've asked this council, or maybe you can direct me to somebody in the city who can give me a wider map that shows all the city-owned land, so that I can start to process some ideas that I have, and I've spoke about those at council. Moving on to number seven, the police department seems to be moving toward a no-bid software, software system. And I'm going to request that maybe you can make that a one-year contract, so the police commission will have a chance to review what's going on with that contract, with an eye on how information is stored and shared by that provider, because I think that's an area where the police commission should be involved in. I have two minutes here, but the police commission can really dig down and make sure our, our data is protected, and that the police department is getting a good product. One of the questions I have is, or the thing I'll point out is, we don't know if those other, other providers would have tried to provide any, fix any shortcomings, and still give us a cheaper product. And so, the last thing I'll say to you guys here is just my objection to this meeting at 2:00. These are very important issues, vast majority of our people are out working, and at a time when they can't be here, you're, you know, debating these very important issues, and I just object to it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rochon Davis on 11, then Tamika La Cluse, also on 11.
Hello, everyone.
How are you?
My name is Rochon Davis with Culture. I don't have much to say, but we've been working on something very special in D2, and I invite all of you guys to come see it. With the help of the city, with the help of the folks in the community, like Councilman Dickinson said, we're working from the grassroots up, but also building from the top down. So, we have a lot of the pieces to the puzzle to really affect change in our communities, and we're working diligently on it. So, I would definitely appreciate your support in passing that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Tamika?
Greetings, council members. Mayor McCarty, I just want to reiterate what Rochon said, what Councilmember Dickinson said. Thank you in advance for passing this item. We know that District Two is a thriving community with historical spaces and multi-generations of families who have thrived, but also have struggled, and we want to make sure that any revitalization efforts include them, and make sure that they can stay and enjoy the fruits of their labor and the resilience that they've shown over the years. The Forward Together Action Plan is, is really a model that I think, that I hope other cities and other areas will duplicate, ensuring that our community members, who are at the forefront of these challenges, are also the voices at the table, that collective governance and consensus building is at the forefront of, of what we do to really build community cohesion and make this space a place for everyone in Sacramento to come and experience, and for the people in District Two to live and work and play in. So, appreciate this item coming before you, appreciate city staff, Mikel, whose name has been mentioned many times, but again, you know, working with Mikel and Ginger and our partners, Sierra Service Project, Mutual Assistance, the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership, and of course, Culture. This is a collaboration that we hope to see more of in your districts, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I have no more speakers on the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the entire consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions, please say no. Hearing none, measures pass. Next item, please.
And we move to the discussion calendar. Item 15 is City-County Partnership Agreement to Address Homeless Crisis Update.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is our six-month report for the City-County Partnership from July 1 through December 31st of 2024. This, we're about halfway through this agreement, almost exactly halfway through this agreement. It was, it's been a good baseline agreement to get the city and county to work together and have some accountability on this, and provide you some feedback every six months to show you the work that we're doing. All right, so what we have done is taken the agreement and broken it down into four separate areas, outreach, services, shelter housing, and training and information. If we look at, well, let me back up. I will tell you that we have been using the same model with the red, yellow, and green. Red indicates that an area has not been completed. Yellow is that it's in progress, and then green is that it has been completed in full and meets the requirement. And so, in the outreach area, we have met all the requirements. We have green across the board. We have, we do have 10 encampment teams that are out in the city every day. We have, actually, the city has, so these are minimum standards on this, 25 city encampment workers. We actually have 40 out in the field right now with DCR, our contract with Hope Step Up, and that gets us ours. The county has 10 mental health workers out. There's actually two that are in, currently in training, which will bring them to 12. And so, we are deploying out to everyday, very large teams throughout the city. The county is meeting their 67% within the city, their mental health workers in the city. Currently, Community Health Works is providing the 15 CalAim workers that are providing the ECM and community service component of this. County staff, obviously, is conducting behavioral health assessments and enrollments constantly, and I'll let them speak on that, as far as breaking that out a little bit later. City will determine deployment sites for engagement. We deploy teams every day throughout the city, covering all of our districts, and we, we assign out every morning. Encampment teams will engage in 20 large encampments. This language is a, is a little older language. We don't have 20 large encampments throughout the city in total. Obviously, this changes over time, but we are certainly engaging in more than 20 encampments per month, far exceeding this. And then, the last metric on this is navigating a range, people experiencing homelessness back to their jurisdiction when appropriate. For the city, we've always looked at this as, in that we will get you back to your jurisdiction if we have a contact and someone that is willing to accept you back into your district. We, we don't want to just take somebody into another city or out in the county if they're not going to a specific location to be, to be housed. This is a look at some of the outreach that we've provided in the last six months. 3,879 unique locations that we've been to. We have served 2,348 unduplicated individuals, so it is not a combined or going back and, and repeating. This is individuals that we've actually talked to and provided service for. And then, the breakdown numbers, there's 40,000 overall services. This is a, in total, all services that all of us out there have provided, from providing clothing to general case management, getting vital documents, putting people in the coordinated access system. So, it gives us a total of 40,000 services that we've provided in the last six months. Under services, the county has provided the four core centers that we have been Under services, the county has provided the four core centers that we have been stood up. Core X was the last one that came online, and we're meeting that metric. The sobering center that we have is the Crib, the, on 7th and H, at Well Spaces running. That is not only a sobering center, but it also has a behavioral health component to it. The next metric, city-county, will refer care coordination programs, including behavioral health. So, we have the behavioral health outpatient treatments, we have FSPs, and then, of course, we're providing the CalAim enhanced care management. FSPs, if the program is full, slots will be added, and county is meeting the state standard for access to substance disorder services. And then, lastly, when appropriate, we'll provide the involuntary diversion programs. There's the outpatient programs. We have Care Court that was just brought up in December, and we're meeting that metric. Under shelter and housing, so our first 12 months, the county did meet the metric by opening their 200 beds. The shovel-ready, we'll skip over 36 months and go to shovel-ready site. We, the city, provided the shovel-ready site at Stockton Boulevard. That just came up in December, and we opened it with 175. And then, the 36-month metric up there is the Watt Avenue that's broke ground and is going right now, slated for 225. So, we'll get credit for the 25 from that to make the 175 from Stockton Boulevard add up to our total of 200 required in that metric. City and county, we both have shelters that are outside of the coordinated access system, and then, the rest that aren't, we don't have. So, the access to this, we wanted immediate placement that we have. So, we have our Roseville Road Center and our Outreach and Engagement Center that we can immediately place somebody. Everything else has been put into the coordinated access system, and so, we have, city and county have both met that metric. And then, city-county will finalize an affordable housing plan. This was back in October 23 that we provided an affordable housing plan. And lastly, city and county agree to seek additional funding for mental health and homelessness. We are constantly applying for Prop 1, Home Key Plus, ERF, HAP, any funding available out there. So, we're very active in providing, seeking grants to cover this. Last area is training and information. County has provided the mental health first aid train to the city. They've provided the public health education to shelter operators. We had asked them to come and provide us, the city, DCR staff, information on all the programs and how to access them, and they graciously came over and, over months, treated, trained us up on several programs that they have. The next one, city and county shall track and share information and data on outcomes. We have cleaned up this metric quite a bit, have agreed on how we're pulling this information. Part of it is from the HMIS system. The other part of this is in the behavioral health. There is a little safety wall in there because behavioral health is in that treatment mode, so there is some HIPAA compliance that we're working with and careful with, that we don't share any information that shouldn't be shared outside of that. And then, lastly, the 5150 training was asked for in the last six-month requests, and they provided the 5150 training to the city, DCR workers. And with that, this is just an overview that we are hitting all of our categories right now and open to questions.
So, Mayor, I have seven speakers. Shall we take those first? Thank you. Maine Sechow, Donna Taylor, Mac Worthy, Twana James, Mack, and then, Simon Hyatt. Please feel free to line up in the aisle. So, again, Maine Sechow, Donna Taylor, Mac Worthy, Twana James, Mack, and then, Simon Hyatt.
Thank you for, council and the mayor. We still don't have no power at the trailer, and people is getting really sick, and there's mold there. Thank you.
Donna?
Hello, everyone. First, I want to thank God. I want to thank everyone on the panel. I'm a resident of First Step Community, located on 3,900 Roseville Road, where there are located 39 pallets, I mean, trailers with no electricity, and there are 60 pallets with electricity. Not only that, the pallets, I mean, yeah, the pallets on Florin Road all have electricity, the ones on Stockton Boulevard all have electricity, and it's not fair that we don't have electricity for the trailers on Roseville Road. Not only that, there's nowhere to walk, nowhere to walk, there's nowhere to park your car, nowhere to wash and dry our clothes, and it's not fair that the other shelters have these things and we don't have them. So, I wanted to say that, and it's just not fair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mac Worthy is next up. Did you want to?
We hear many things on this homeless. What are you training? Did you get anything from the medical? Where is the doctors to declare that person is mentally? Where is those documentation? We want to see those documentation. Now, who own the sites that you're in? Do the city or county own those sites? Somebody should get that information up. Now, when we look at that, is, we said a district. What are you in the Constitution to tell a person they can't get mental health treatments because they're not in this district? We want to hear that. That's bullshit. They're saying, if I got to go to the doctor, I got to show the doctor where I live? Get your act together, people. These are the things that we're going to ask the Republican people on. Step up on this because somebody abusing money here. You creating these things, but you're not saying where the money going. You can't survive our bonds and grants. This thing going out here. How many of those people in mental health that have graduated from mental health? You can't, people. Once you in that treatment, what are you getting in pills for those people? Tell them the truth. Tell them how you come to be that. These are the things that you should be doing when you run into little thing like over at City College over the weekend on Martin King, on Burn Council. That's bullshit. You get into those neighborhoods and talk to those people and find out what's now is going on, not the past. You don't know about the past, don't know what you read. I lived the past of abuse. So, wake up, people.
Your comments. Twana, then Mac?
It wouldn't hurt for you guys to look at us when we come up here. We appreciate that. My name is Twana James, and I reside at 3,900 Roseville Road, and I'm here to ask Roger Dickinson if we can have an appointment with you, if you can have one of your staff come and meet us and have an appointment with you. We have mold. We have, I mean, it's just, it's not livable there. I broke my hand there in December, and it's hard for us to get an appointment with the director there. I have, my hand, I cannot feel no more. The people, they, I mean, they never, how would you feel if everybody had power but you? Even the staff trailer has power. They have power hooked up. They wasted all that money to hook it up, just to take it down and keep these people in the cold and the heat. Everybody has power but them. That is not even right. I'm in a pot, I have heat, but I'm here for my friends because it's wrong. I just think that you guys should have people come in there and have a phone number that people can complain, and if enough people complained, then, you know, do something about it. We're living in filth here. The people, some people, the staff, the nighttime staff is beautiful. Daytime, we can't get them to do nothing. They just sit there on the phone. We have to wait for them to get off their phone and texting so that we can get them to ask them to do, you know, something for us. And then, it's just, I think that you guys should have some heart for them. People have power and they don't? They freeze. If they want the heat, they go into the dining room. People, TVs blaring, lights are on. I mean, come on, some of them might have a job, and they got to live through that? It's not right. Just please, and this is, I got pictures. It's the things that we have to live through. Mold in the shower. Nobody cleans nothing. They were not supposed to clean. Who's supposed to clean the bathrooms? We can't. We got 20 minutes to sit in there, and we can't clean. It's so much fuck.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mac.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Mac. My pronouns are they/them, and I'm a community organizer in Sacramento. I always appreciate presentations. I always appreciate when we give more information than the bare minimum in presentations. I'm seeing today 2,300 unduplicated individuals, where we have a housing search slash placement being 1,800. I think that those are two different things, right? Housing search versus housing placement and things like that. And I think, I bring this to your attention because oftentimes, what we see is these services, right? The general care, the housing, the hygiene, or the clothing, the hygiene, transportation, food services, care coordination, all of these things are oftentimes precursors to sweeps in Sacramento City, districts and limits. So, then you sweep people, and then you can't find them, and then we have to start the process all over again. I think I want to speak on a large encampment sweep that just happened off of El Camino about two weeks ago. It happened on a rainy day. Over 400 people were shoved further down and out and further into hiding, so that way they can just, you know, live in their tent and try to stay warm. This was done by city rangers alongside Hope and DCR. That day, Hope sat in their car while DCR had one person on site standing there watching as law enforcement and Sheriff Work Project in coordination ripped people's belongings away from them. I think the biggest critique that I have, besides the sweep in general, is the fact that actually, a lot of these speakers were, a lot of these folks were Spanish-speaking individuals, which meant that when officers went out and put their tags out, they dropped one and did not speak to anybody who lived there, which meant that nobody knew what was going on until the day of, and they had their shit starting to be ripped from them, and then threatened with arrest in a language they don't even understand. So, the coordination efforts could-
Comments. Your time is complete. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Simon Hyatt.
Always less sweeps.
Greetings, council, and I just wanted to stand in solidarity with our residents at the Roseville Road facility. Mac just spoke about transportation, and I wanted to alert you to an article, front page Sacramento B, Wednesday, February 19th of this year, that tells the story of Wendy Connell, who was killed on Roseville Road just outside of the shelter. And when that shelter was built, we were told that it would have access to transportation, local transit, and that it would be safe. But unfortunately, Roseville Road has proven to not be safe. It has a 50 mile an hour speed limit. Oftentimes, as you know, people don't drive the speed limit. They typically drive 10 and 20 miles an hour faster, and that's how we lost our neighbor, Wendy Connell, who was on her way to getting housing, as you'll see in that article by Ariane Lang. So, do read that article, and let's slow the speed limit ASAP. This is something that we can do really quick. If we have homeless facilities, last year, we talked about, you know, we can't tell people where they can't be without telling them where they can be. Well, the places that they can be need to be safe for them to get to, and so, it would be my proposal that we would treat any homeless shelter just as we would treat a school and have a 25 mile an hour speed limit. Those are something, things that we could do right away without having to do more bike lanes, things like that. We can lower speed limits like that and help save our communities' lives. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers on this agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Questions and comments? Councilmembers? Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Pedro, a couple of questions. Now that we are two years into this partnership, and you are a little over a year into what you're doing and figuring out what are the next steps, especially how can we increase the accountability and increase the results in helping our residents who are on the streets, getting them into supportive and permanent housing? What do you see as the next steps to help increase the positive outcome?
Whew, that's a big question. So, the agreement itself, so this City-County Partnership Agreement addresses some baseline service provisions, and we, there's some good points brought up. We are providing a lot of services. Are those, as we progress, so we started with an original model, and we had to have some kickoff point to determine how we're going to address providing services. So, we started there. We're now halfway into it, and we're looking at, are the services we're providing, the correct services? Are they getting, are they effective? Are we making a difference? Everything that we would look at to readjust, I can tell you that we have been constantly looking at our metrics and trying to determine what will work better for us. We have pulled a lot of our behavioral health workers off of outreach and trying to provide behavioral outreach in the streets and put them into our shelters so that they can provide more effective behavioral health, where we can make contact with that individual day after day in a setting that is more secure, stable, and so, we've been making adjustments such as that. We have more adjustments that need to be made, and it's up to you to decide if we want to do anything with the City-County Partnership and add more to it, or look at other services that we would want to provide or shift our service model.
And thank you for that. I'm not on the partnership, so this is my one opportunity to publicly state my opinion so we don't violate the Brown Act, but I see the good work you're doing and also acknowledging that we receive less HAP money, and so, now, we also have to look at, we are facing a budget deficit. I think it's more important than ever that we find ways, one, we increase the data we're getting, and two, look at what are we investing in? Because, you know, I've said this before, it's not new, getting a 35% positive exit into housing is not a good investment in our money. It's good for everybody that gets those services, but what are we missing? So, I would support you talking to those of my colleagues who are on the City-County Partnership of, we now have a baseline. What can we do that is better, that is more accountable, seeing that potentially, less money is coming in? The governor is requesting increased accountability, which I know you're instituting, but I'd like to be, you know, lockstep with the county so that we make sure we're both in line on that. And then, something you said that I would just like to hear your thoughts on, how we're investing in sobering centers. They're not being used as much as they could be, and we heard from our police chief, was it last week, it could have been the week before, that when they book somebody, like, they're losing an officer off the street for three-plus hours. And is a sobering center a better place for somebody versus jail? And then, I know sometimes our sobering centers can reject somebody coming and saying, we don't want them there. How do we? How do we, I've seen models in other cities that sobering centers are very effective as an interim place. So I am, I'm looking forward to your thoughts on that, your thoughts to the four-by-four of how can we work better to make sobering centers more productive so that our officers are not necessarily spending three hours in booking because those individuals probably don't need to be in jail? And how can we strengthen the balance of making sure our sobering centers are taking individuals so that they have a safe place to sober up, but not, not through jail? I don't expect you to have an answer now, but that's something I'd like to see more of and, and that conversation in, in the partnership agreement. But thank you.
Yes, and, and I will mention that there are a couple of things that we are currently doing. We have the street overdose response team that is that combination team that DCR and the paramedic from the fire department. We have two of those rigs up right now. They are taking individuals to our sobering centers. And so that's one component of using sobering centers more. And then we are also, on the fire department side, they're looking to address that alternative response model so they can actually take somebody to a sobering center instead of a hospital. So there are a couple of, of ways that is, they're already in effect to use the sobering centers more.
Great, and I know we have a county representative here. If they've got any thoughts, they would love to contribute to that while they're here. I think it's always good to hear from them at the same time.
Tim, come on up.
Welcome to the hot seat.
Thank you, members of the council, Mayor Tim Letts, Director of Health Services for the county. And yeah, I, I think that's a great question on sobering, sobering center, sober living. We actually, through the Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program, one of the areas that we did augment was, was sobering. In fact, most, I think, if not all of those facilities we added were in city, and I appreciate, and we met with council members whose districts those were in, recognizing sometimes the barrier becomes. A lot of those are, are smaller, more home-style or condominium-style settings, and it can be a challenge to bring them into neighborhoods. I feel like our, our provider, Bridges in this case, does a really good job working within our communities. We can always use more, and part of it's just getting enough people interested in doing it, putting in capacity dollars. On the behavioral health side, that's, that's definitely something that we've continued to stay focused on, on building out. And again, as that intersection of Prop 36, those are our conversations also with the district attorney's office.
Perfect. I would just love to see that potentially strengthened in some of the partnerships we have, especially if we are expanding our service of the alternate model with our firefighters, knowing that they can drop somebody off at a sobering center, and that, and that center is not going to turn them away, because I also trust the, the expertise of our firefighters to know where somebody medically should be.
Right now, if I could, yeah.
Versus the argument with the sobering center.
The way that we, we see that happening, so the program you're describing is our Triage to Alter Destination program that we went live with in January. Our crisis receiving behavioral health that is off downtown, right next to the jail, is one of those drop-off sites. And we've specifically worked with WellSpace Health to be able to connect into our, our substance use treatment system. So we would probably still want them going to the crib if for no other reason than to get the assessment of, are they ready for sober living? But definitely that's, that's the design or idea behind that Triage to Alter Destinations is get them to the, to the crib or our mental health treatment center. Don't, let's not get them into jail if it's law enforcement, let's not get them into the emergency departments.
Thank you. And I guess this is for the next time you guys come back for the city-county partnership, I think more details on what's working and not working with the sobering center, or you guys can work on that on the four-by-four as you come back. But I think the alternate response model is something of kind of like the next step as we look at the city-county partnership. How can we make sure the fire department is included in their leadership in all of this, you know, despite you having personal knowledge, Brian? Bring in the leadership so that we're all on the same page, even Metro, so there, we have something as a consistent message, but.
Thank you for that, council member. It's helpful to know each, each iteration of the report, we add more, more data elements. Now, FSPs are a standard piece. Happy to maybe build out some more around the substance use treatment and metrics there also.
Now that we have Prop 1, Prop 36, I think our community is going to want to know, how are we implementing what we currently have, despite not necessarily having funding to go with the new obligations fully? What is it that we are doing to, to try and address it, as well as our community is looking for alternative response models? So what are we looking at and how does the partnership agreement, I guess, mold into this, this new, new era so that we can get people into shelter and off the streets? So, thank you. I appreciate that. And I will just specifically call out before my next colleague joins that the 40,018 services for 2,348 unique individuals does relate to just over 17 touches per person. So it is important to call that out statistically of, there's a lot of things that the city and county are doing to try and help individuals, and I want to see how we can, we can make that more successful. You know, I don't know what the answer is, but I know you guys are doing a lot, and however we can do that to make those touches more successful. And to the next step of getting them off the streets is something I'm interested in hearing more about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Brian, for, for the presentation. I just really want to acknowledge the amount of work that's gone in, gone into this over the last year or so, and it's really been, I know it's been hard work, and I know it's been challenging, but we've also, I think, seen a lot of progress, and that, that shows up in our numbers. You know, as the governor recently released a website that shows the point-in-time counts and how those numbers are across the state, and Sacramento is outperforming virtually every other county in terms of being able to get people into services, into housing. Does it mean we've done enough? Absolutely not. We have a lot of work left to do, but I think it's really important to acknowledge the work that is done because we, I know that you have people on your team, and the county has people on their team that are out every single day, and these are social workers, these are healthcare workers, these are people who are directly engaging in encampments and talking with folks and trying to get them connected to services. So, you know, we're always under resourced, but I, I just want to acknowledge that work because I, it can be very thankless at times. So I hope, if anyone's watching from any of those teams, the HART team and others, we see you out here. I have a couple of specific questions and then just some comments. One, I know we have, we have folks from the Roseville Road Shelter here, and I know that last week several of us on, just so you know, several of us on this site did reach out and, and ask questions about the electricity and about, about blankets and other things. So can you provide an update on that for, for folks?
Sure. So when we started that site, we were trying to get that site up to get shelters up as quick as possible. And so with that, we provided the pallet homes and the trailers first before we brought in the infrastructure of electricity. And we, the process to get electricity to a site is, is an effort in and of itself. One of the biggest things that slows that down, bless you, is providing the, which is called the switchgear or the transformer, to provide the electricity to that many individual sites. And so the, the ordering backlog on that is four to six months just to get that transformer. So we decided that we would go with the placement, get people off the streets, get them inside, and continue the process of providing electricity. So with that, it requires us to then get the power source there and then get conduit to this individual sites, and then pull the electrical wire and actually hook up the sites. So we, we did that, and we got the pallet homes wired. With the trailers, we have power to every trailer right now, but there is a safety factor involved in that these trailers have been FEMA trailers that have been around with many people living in them at different sites. And so the safety concern that we had is we don't want to just plug these trailers in and have some electrical wire short-circuit outlet, something happen, and catch the trailer on fire. A trailer will go up very quick. If on, on a small fire, it will, it'll run that trailer instantly. So that was our concern. So we went out to bid to get a contractor to look at our trailers. That process in itself, we have to go through our city process, bid process, so we did select someone. They did go out there, they inspected our trailers, a visual inspection. The, the cost to go through each trailer, visually inspect them, upgrade them, to put heating in the trailers, because simply pulling electrical to the trailer does not make the heater work. The heater works off of a separate system, and so we either have to upgrade the system to make it an electrical heater. All of that said, it's cost prohibitive to upgrade these trailers. They're, they're easily towards the end of their life. We have currently on order a contract for 135 new homes, tiny homes, and we will be replacing the trailers with those, and then we will power those up. And so there's, there is a lot of thought put into, do we expend that money on a, for a two-month, three-month period, or just change them out for tiny homes? So that's where we're at in that process. We, there has been offers to have as many blankets as you want. We have offered, like somebody said, either move you into the, the day room that has an HVAC system or into our office space there that also has a climate-controlled area. And so with what we have to work with, we've, we've done as much as we can for now.
That's really helpful, just because I, you know, I want to make sure that we have that information out in the public. I know that we received an email about that, and many of people are wondering, but, you know, it's challenging when, when we're trying to move quickly, but we also don't have the infrastructure in some of the places that we've identified. It's, it just takes a long time, and we know that we're working with our partners too, right? So we have to go through not only a city process, but also a smud process to make sure that we're in line with them and all of the various projects that they have for electrification. So, so I know that you're continuing to work on that, and I appreciate that. I just wanted to put that out. My next question may be more for the county. I'm wondering if you can talk about the care court implementation, if there's a status on that from the county's perspective, and if that aligns with our, of our city-county partnership?
Yes, and I may phone a friend. I have Nicole Cable here, who I know was here with you guys last week, who also is implementing our, our care program. I guess, are there specific questions that you have in terms of, obviously, we, we implemented December. As of yesterday, we had 21 actual petitions that, that came into the program. So we are seeing a, definitely a notable volume. It seems to be trickling about three-ish a week at this point, and still early in, in that implementation to really have a lot of meaningful data on longer-term outcomes. We know that the majority of, the strongest majority of referrals are coming from family members at this point.
That's really helpful. So 21 thus far, and then what does the timeline typically look like, right, from the time that someone is first, and maybe this isn't a cool question?
That might be a Nicole question.
Someone submits a petition to win, maybe someone enters a program or receives some kind of treatment?
Sure. That varies quite a bit. The court process is obviously, there's a lot of different steps to it, and it depends on whether the person is coming to us through a petition process, which starts at the court and then comes to our team, or if we're receiving referrals, there are three kind of buckets of referral sources, including hospitals who may have somebody on an involuntary hold, our internal behavioral health programs, so such as our HART team and other, our co-response crisis intervention team, we allow them to make referrals to us so that they don't have to engage in that court process. And then the third is the courts. There are certain specific courts that are called out in the law that are able to make those referrals directly to our behavioral health team. So the processes are a little bit different with the referrals. We have two weeks to either file a petition with the court or come up with a decision on whether they're appropriate for care. And those ones, some of those, 21, I believe five of those were ones that our county behavioral health care team did file themselves, and so we're contributing to that number. The rest, as, as Tim Letts said, is most of them are coming from family members. When they come directly through that route, the judge has prima facie review first, and then once he's completed that, it comes to our team to do an investigation. And so from that point of investigation, we then have 30 days to locate an individual, assess them, get records, anything that we need to really substantiate the, the petition, and then we report back to the court. And so that's really where the individual gets enrolled into the program, is they go to that first initial hearing, and at that point, the judge rules on whether or not they're appropriate. The individual is assigned a public defender at the time that behavioral health is assigned at the same time. And so that, at the same time, we are working on doing our investigation, the public defender is also meeting with the client, finding out what their needs and wishes are, and really trying to engage collaboratively into the process.
Great. Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Yeah, I know many of us here are curious about the, the implementation, so just appreciate the update. And yes, I would happily take some pamphlets that, that we can keep on, on, in our offices and pass out to our constituents. I really appreciate that. So I'm just gonna make, I think that's it for you. Thank you. I'm just gonna make a few comments, just high level, and then I'll pass it on. But one of the things that, you know, it's clear to me, as I mentioned at the top, that we, you know, we're making progress. It's gonna take a lot of time, it's gonna take resources, and it's gonna take us working together, as we already are, but in more effective ways. I know that, you know, I, I believe, and I've said this many times, and I'll keep saying it, I really think that we collectively, as a region, our county and the cities within it, including the city of Sacramento, really needs to take a long, hard look at how we can operate and govern ourselves on this issue in a much more formal way. I think the MOU is wonderful. We've, we've made leaps and bounds in, in terms of our relationship, working together with the city and the county together. I think it's a wonderful step forward, but I think there is a lot that we need to do collectively to work together in, in a, in a more formal role. And I think that includes our partners, that includes Sacramento Steps Forward. As many of you know, Sacramento Steps Forward was created as that regional planning and data body, but really, it's not, it's not a decision-making body. It doesn't have any elected officials on the board, and doesn't necessarily have a direct role in, in, in policy. And so that creates sometimes a challenge for us, where we have really great plans that get created, but not necessarily a very actionable way to make them into reality. And actually, normally what happens is you have a lot of jurisdictions that are independently making decisions, and at least to silos. And I know that's not something that we want. We talk about that a lot, that we want to coordinate and collaborate better together. But the challenge is, what is actually happening on the ground is, is other than obviously our teams that are working together through the MOU and the partnership agreement, we're not necessarily having those high-level conversations that I think we need to be having about how do we get to zero? What would it look like if we focused on women and children, got them off the street? What would it look like if we focused on veterans, for example? Those conversations happen in a planning capacity, but not necessarily at the elected capacity of us to be working together. And I think that that's an area where we need to have those conversations together with our county partners, and frankly, I believe with the other cities that are also in our county. I don't think we all have the same role to play. For example, we won't, we are not all going to contribute the same amount of resources, depending on the size and the severity of, of the population within those jurisdictions. But I do think we all should be working together in a much more formalized capacity. So that, that's a request that I'm gonna have of us, is that we take a look at that, that we evaluate whether or not the current system that we're, that we're working under makes sense for the types of decisions that we need to be making, and whether we should be looking forward to a more formalized structure, such as a joint powers authority, which about 15 years ago was originally discussed between the city and the county when Sacramento Steps Forward was first created, and never actually came to fruition. So I think that that's one area that we could look at, but I know that there are other options. The county of Sacramento did a, an analysis on shared governance models in 2023. I've read through that report. I think that there's some great work there that we can possibly take a look at, but it's gonna be, require us all meeting together, and so I'd love to, love to see that. And I also just want to note that this- And I also just want to note that this also should combine with our work with SHRA as well. We know that we have our Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. They've got their housing action plan, affordable housing action plan that was a part of that work. But how do we incorporate all these things together? And how do we collectively make decisions as a region on homelessness and housing that align with our data and the reports that we put out? Right now, that's, it's not really happening. And I would love to see that happen. And so that, those are some of my comments. I'd love to see better coordination. I'd love us to go down that path and have those conversations with the county and ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson.
Thanks, Mayor. And thanks very much for the presentation. I want to start by following on from some of the earlier exchanges since your presentation, Brian, and maybe beginning with Roseville Road. And in particular, and I appreciate the description of what is being done to try to upgrade the conditions at Roseville Road. Besides those, we know we obviously have safety issues with respect to transportation and access, and some frustration with trying to create that connection between particularly light rail and the Roseville Road facility. So maybe you want to say a word about where we stand with respect to realizing a more direct connection for people at the facility to get to and from light rail?
Sure. So when we initially looked at exit out of the facility, we looked at the east side, which is the most direct route out of Roseville Road to the RT station. We did some preliminary walks and actually put a gate in, a pedestrian gate in that backside. And as we went down the road with that and started talking to Caltrans about that possibilities, they had concerns, because it's actually an off-ramp, the very tail end of an off-ramp, but it is an off-ramp. And so in discussions with them, they had safety concerns to the degree of putting up fencing barriers, extensive safety measures to make that exit out that backside because of that exit. So the requirements there ended up being much bigger than we would have anticipated from the initial conversations. So what we did is, on the south side facing Roseville Road, there is a south gate down there that we have opened up, and it has a very large area, once you get out of the gate, before you're even accessing Roseville Road, which gives you a walkway south into the RT area without having to be close to the road. So that is initially what we have. We are working on another pedestrian access fence to run down the front side of Roseville Road, so that you have space from the road and using some of the facility itself to make a pedestrian way to get in and out of the facility.
I mean, you might even be able to employ something like a Jersey barrier to separate the travel lane from pedestrian lane, short of a full-fledged fence, something that would be easier to get and install.
We've talked to, Public Works has a project of putting our rail all along Roseville Road that we've talked about. And so there is some other barriers that we have discussed.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, there are Jersey barriers along the side of the road in certain places, along Auburn and Roseville Road, not so much for pedestrian safety, but to prevent people from parking and walking in ways that would be unsafe. But I think the sooner we can create some sort of safer access than exists now, the better. I wanted to ask you about the, you mentioned 135 tiny homes that are on order. And those are being paid for out of the grant that came from the state last year? Or are these in addition to?
Those 135 are the Encampment Resolution Fund grant that was for the Northern Bike Trail.
Yeah. So it had been my impression that we were going to expand the capacity of Roseville Road's facility by that 135. But from what you said, it sounds like if they're replacing trailers, that we're going to have something significantly less in terms of net growth of the facility and accommodations. So what does that turn out to be, Brian?
So the grant was actually written to be at least 100 more tiny homes. And because I am cheap, for lack of better terms, renegotiated the purchase price of our pallet homes from, down from $13,000 to $10,000, which allowed us more power to buy the extra 35. So those 35 will be used to backfill the trailers. We'll still be meeting our 100. And there's a little bit of funding in there to expand on that a little further. But we're meeting the ERF in expanding that and allowing us...
So we get a net of at least 100 more tiny homes on the site? And those will all be connected to power as they go in?
Correct. So we've already ordered the switchgear, the transformer. We're getting that going. It's been ordered to make sure that we're not, that's not our holdup. We are going to add these a little bit differently, to where we're setting the homes, bringing in the power to them, and then bringing individuals in, so that we're not trying to power them up with running conduit and pulling wire while people are living in them. So...
Yeah, I think it certainly would be desirable to have them in functioning, full functioning condition when people do move in, so we avoid this mismatch. And I understood at the time, and I understand now what you said earlier, that the decision was made to try to get people in under a roof, rather than wait and have the full-fledged operation, which would have been, as we have seen, months and months at least. So I understand that decision. Let me move on for a moment. I want to pick up on this issue of sobering centers for a moment. And of course, as you and I were talking earlier today, sobering centers are not something new to Sacramento County. We were talking about, at least my recollection was, Volunteers of America operated a sobering-up location in the River District for many, many years. And so this is really the continuation of, or at least the return, if not the continuation of a modality that's been around for a while. But what I wanted to explore just for a moment with you was, you know, the concept of housing first was developed for a number of reasons. But one of them was to allow people who had some form of addiction, it could be alcohol, could be drugs, to actually, rather than going to some congregate location or non-home location, to have a place to go. And one of the strengths of housing first in many of its early incarnations was that those who might drink more than they should, and sometimes repeatedly, wouldn't end up going someplace and drying out for 48 hours or 72 hours, and then back on the street, which was often the case, and that's what we experienced, as I recall, with the VOA site, but rather would have an apartment, a room, somewhere they could go, and then they had that roof on an ongoing basis. So I am, I'm just curious, in the current realm, what kind of experience are we seeing with those who show up at the sobering center, such as the crib? And to what extent are we employing a housing-first approach to address the kind of circumstance that I've described?
Tim, do we have anybody that can speak on that? Because WellSpace is running the crib.
Yeah. WellSpace does run the crib, and I think there's a lot to unpack in that question. And I think what you're describing, and I was texting back and forth to try and make sure I understand, I think you're describing some of the detox beds that used to be available.
Yeah.
Versus typically, like, the sober, the sober living facilities that we have are typically going to be a longer-term placement, so they're not going to be, you know, a few days. The detox environment was where you had people that would, yeah, detoxify, but then limited stay, be released. What we're hoping to address with the crib was what I described, which is, we see the crib as a front door to a lot of our services. So they come into the crib, they're able to detox. And then WellSpace has access to beds across our substance use treatment spectrum, so residential treatment, sober living, those types of placements.
Let me interrupt. Pardon me for interrupting for a moment, but what we saw, to the best of my recollection, was the same thing. The idea was, you went to VOA, you dried out. The effort was then to move a person into a longer-term circumstance where their condition was being addressed, whether it was alcohol, generally it was alcoholism at that time, but drug as well. But the percentage of people who did that, who said, yes, I will take that next step, was pretty low. And so you ended up with people drying out, but then going back on the street. And so my question is, to the extent that you're able to address it, is that a similar experience that we have now, where most people don't take that next step, but rather just say, thanks very much, see ya, I'm going back to wherever?
I can't give you details on that. I apologize. Happy to, wasn't anticipating the heavier substance use treatment questions today, because I would bring our sub-deal manager along. I will say, generally, what I hear from our teams is, especially with substance use treatment, it really is something that, it's important to find the right time for somebody to be ready to engage in treatment. One of the challenges that we've had, which is why we're trying this model with the crib, is the worst case is somebody's ready for treatment, and we don't have a spot for them. And that's the situation that we're running into. And so we're trying to make sure then, that when that person is ready, we have a spot for them, and we want to help them on their journey to success.
Actually, I really appreciate your response. And to the extent that we have some data, the city and the county, primarily the county, I'm sure, on what is happening to those who come to the sobering center, I'd be interested. I think that would be educational for all of us, to see whether we're simply a palliative for the moment, or are we actually using that as a means to meaningfully, and I agree with you, people have to be ready to make, to take that next step, and is how well are we doing in that regard? I'd really be interested in that. But you also, your comment leads me to the next area that I wanted to ask a little bit about, and it comes again from some of the exchange with Councilmember Maple. I'm curious if you have a feel for this yet. It may be too soon, maybe too early, but when do we reach the point, if you think we ever do, that those who are being directed involuntarily into treatment start to displace those who are seeking treatment voluntarily?
Yeah. I think that's a really tough question, particularly when you're talking substance use treatment. Right now, there is no category of locked substance use treatment facility. So I think we are definitely a ways before we would contemplate that. And realistically, we need, we know our focus is, we want people to be voluntarily coming into treatment. Working with WellSpace Health, we have nearly 200 substance use treatment beds that are being built out at the Stockton campus. And our focus there has been voluntary. That being said, we have this intersection of Prop 36. And what we want on the behavioral health side is, that's where we know we have opportunities where they're going through diversion programs and link them into treatment, with an opportunity to get their charges reduced on or dismissed for going into treatment. I think when we talk about forms of involuntary, I think that's an area that we're trying to develop our services around, where we can support efforts that are happening.
Yeah. And I mean, I don't want to go too far down this, because we had a Prop 36 presentation last week, but whether it's CARE Court, or SB 43, or Prop 36, to the extent, and I'm using involuntary, when someone says, yes, I'll enter into a diversion program, I don't consider that completely voluntary. So I mean, it's, but without semantics, if someone is being told, get treatment, or you're going to jail, or they're being told, you're going to treatment through CARE Court or SB 43 or other means, those are people who presumably are not in a state of mind where they would say, hey, I'd love treatment. I mean, I won't say it's coerced necessarily. I think that's probably an unfair implication, but they're being given a choice, which is not necessarily a choice they would like to make. And I'm curious, and maybe this is for some additional homework, is to figure out, when do people that we start, that we're directing to treatment through one of these portals or another, start to displace people who want it, who want treatment voluntarily? And when does our capacity run out if the state doesn't put any money into Prop 36 additional treatment resources? Because obviously, the governor put no money in the budget for that. I don't think you can assume that the legislature will add money. They may. I mean, they may well do that. But if we got no money from the state for additional treatment slots, when do these things collide, between voluntary and involuntary?
Fortunately, with our reimbursement, this is the one area that we're not, on the behavioral health side, concerned about. There is, we know, whether it's involuntary through Prop 36, or voluntary through our normal treatment, we have the funding to pay for the beds, and that'll continue even if it grows. What our challenge is, is the capacity limitation. It takes a lot of money to build a facility and years to do it. I know the WellSpace campus is, you know, three, four years in development. So it's really having the facility that can, that can take people and are willing to serve the Medi-Cal population that we serve with behavioral health.
Well, that's a hopeful response. Thank you. Thank you for that. I'm going to let you give way to Brian, and I'll ask him a couple of questions more. Thank you. Brian, can you bring the chart back up that showed the services, the outreach services? I just wanted to ask a question, or two about it. Yeah, there you go. So Councilmember Kaplan put it in a slightly different way, but in my looking at this, I thought for the general case management, there was an average of two to three touches per, excuse me, per unduplicated individuals. And I'm curious about the, if you could expand a little bit on the nature and extent of what case management means in this context? Because to me, it usually means a continuing interaction or relationship with a person to help them progress to a state where they are able either to move into, back into the mainstream, or into permanent supportive housing, at least somewhere along, on a continuum. Can you talk a little bit more about what this 24,458 represents in connection with the 23,48 unduplicated individuals?
Sure. So there's various levels of case management. Most of these that are out in the outreach arena are light-touch in the outreach arena are light touch case management. And, and that's why you see so many here. There's the balance of how much case management, time, effort, and, and there's the cost to it, because the time that we have an outreach worker spending with one individual providing case management, we can do intensive case management on a smaller number of people, or light touch case management, and stay in touch with a larger number of people. And so most of this is a lighter touch, and just staying in contact with people. We, we don't have the bandwidth, and we don't have the funding to do heavy case management in the street. And, and so that's, that's where you're looking at a higher number with a lighter touch.
And so that leaves me to wonder about, about the utility generally of, or meaningfulness of, of this, because I think it's fairly commonly thought, you, you need probably to have 10 to 15 contacts with someone who's out on the, the street before they, you build enough trust with them that they will say yes, when you offer them housing or services. And so I wonder, some further delineation of whether, you know, what, what the maximum number of contacts under this category with, with someone was the minimum. I assume the minimum's one, probably, but, but where, where is that, or where that median is, would be, I think, more helpful to understand. Are we, in that light touch, really not accomplishing what we would like to? Or are we, with a certain number of cases, having enough touches that we're actually persuading people to, to take advantage of shelter and housing, excuse me, shelter and services, assuming they're available?
So there's, there's a lot to that question, right? So every individual is different out there. You can go up to, to talk to somebody, and on the first time, they're like, yes, I'm ready to go. It all leads back to capacity. Do we have the capacity to tell the individual we have housing for them, or shelter space, or something available? I, total speculation, but I'm telling you that, my guess would be that number would be much lower of touches if we, you know, on touch one, two, three, somewhere lower down the line, we continue to tell them we have shelter available for them, and we would, there would be three touches. This average would go down. I think these are continuous touches, because we, we don't have the capacity to actually provide the, the true base need of getting someone off the street.
Yeah, I, I mean, I suspect you're absolutely right. And, you know, we're trying to figure out what works, and how much it takes to, to get something to work, to help somebody off the, off the street. And that's why I'm looking for a little bit more, not, not today necessarily, but a, a greater level of refinement. So as you go into the months ahead, thinking about how, how you might assess that. And I, I just make a general comment, which I, I've made on a couple other occasions, about the need to track those, those were trying to assist, and those were assisting, obviously. The, the state is, is interested in, in what are measurable outcomes. The, the public understandably has, has a very legitimate interest in measurable outcomes. And I think we've gotten better. I, you know, I applaud what you're, what you're doing in, in that regard, but I think we, we've got a ways to go before we can really say, with confidence, here's, here's what we're, here, we're helping X number of people, and six months later, they're housed, a year later, they're housed. I, I'm, having said that, I, I understand the challenges of, of doing that, but I think we have to, we have to do the best we can in that respect. I did want to say just a couple other quick things that, one of which, your chart on training, I, I think that's great. I am a huge advocate of, of cross-training personnel, and this is not exactly cross-training, but it's a, to me, it's an analog to it, where the, where the city staff is working with the county staff and others involved to understand multiple functions and perspectives, which I think helps, just helps them do their job better. And it makes us more effective and efficient in doing that. So for, for me, that gets a big gold star. And I hope, and I hope there'll, there'll be more. And the last thing, Mayor, that, that I just want to say today, which isn't so much involved in this discussion, but for me, is, is still a, a guiding principle is, and I hope we can address this to some extent, perhaps in the budget process, is to get to the, more to the prevention side. We're not talking about so much prevention today, but on, from my perspective, until we do a better job of preventing homelessness, we're never going to, however you define solving homelessness, we're not going to solve it. So I hope we can have that discussion in the, in the months, months ahead, about how, in a, in a broader context, we're using our, our resources across the different elements of the homelessness assistance continuum. Thanks. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talamontes.
Councilmember Dickinson, 100% agree. Prevention is the most cost-effective strategy to prevent homelessness. And I think we've seen documentation of it, and SHRA has presented, you know, presented on it. And it's something that we've got to continue focusing on, because we've got to prevent people from becoming homeless in the first place, and that's going to help us with the waterfall, and be able to draw down resources. So. I do have a question. So on the report, as of the end of December 2024, the total capacity in FSP programs was 2,758. From July to December 2024, the FSP served 2,631, 95% of total capacity, unduplicated individuals. And so I know on the slide, it says, if county FSP is full, slots will be added. So one, is it full? I think it's probably a question for the county. One, is it full? And then, two, if it is, then what triggers, like, the next step to open more FSPs?
So, yeah, the FSPs, we will continue to expand as they fill up. It's not full at this point. We do amendments to our contracts. So we have a, we, in the county, we do pooled contracts with our providers. We would increase the contract amount to that provider to, to account for the number of additional slots that we would add for those programs. So we do break it down by, like, there's FSPs for adults, for justice involved, for youth. So we, we split those out, so there are different provider contracts, but we would just increase that amount.
Got it. So the county has capacity right now?
Yes.
And so, okay. So I think keep us posted for Department of Community Response, you know, if, I mean, if we're helping and we're working with the county, how do we fill up all those slots, so that we can continue helping more people? So.
Yeah, and, and I, I know that's something, even with, I will say with Prop 1, we're looking at a revamp of our FSP program. There are some models that we look at, like a tiered program, kind of a, an FSP light, and then a full scope FSP that we're exploring. I think Councilmember Maple mentioned the state's transparency portal. If you look at the number of FSP slots, Sacramento actually has some of the most in the state, even before factoring in adjustments for population. And so we feel that the number of FSP slots we have is, is, is pretty good. But again, if, if we see an increase in, in need, we, we definitely make those adjustments. But also recognizing, just because someone's on an FSP, they still have access to housing support dollars. They're still able to, to access case management services, substance use behavioral health services. So it really does track down to the needs of, of that particular individual, and whether an FSP is appropriate.
Okay. And, and I do want to acknowledge the county has its hands full with the implementation of Care Court, Senate Bill 43, Prop 36, and just the different programs that you guys have. So I do want to acknowledge you and your team.
Appreciate that. It's never done in behavioral health.
That you're, that you're working on. And I know our city attorney's office has filed a few Care Court petitions, and so we're waiting to.
I think we saw three, yeah.
Three, yeah. So we're waiting to hear back. Well, actually, we're not going to hear back. So just for everyone here, like, once the city attorney's office submits those petitions, it gets sent to the courts, and then we don't hear back, and we're not in the loop of it, correct, city attorney?
Right.
Okay. So I don't know if there's a way for the county to support us in this, so that we can figure out what that process looks like. It might even be out of your hands, I'm not sure.
Let me explore that, because I, part of it's a privacy issue. Like, even when board members ask me for a status update, sometimes I'll give them aggregate information as opposed to specific information about that individual, unless there's a release of information.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll go back to my team to see if there's a way we can at least provide any updates on, in aggregate, of the ones that you've submitted, kind of where they, what the disposition was.
Yeah, if I may, Councilmember, I think we're really looking at public information available based on the court proceedings.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, that, that'd be wonderful, just because I know our Department of Community Response, our Police Department, Fire Department, they know who the frequent users of our emergency rooms are. Like, they know who is in need of support services. And so for us to figure out what's the best process for us to navigate this would be incredibly helpful. Whatever information you can share with our city attorney and DCR, I think would be, would be great for us as we move forward on these policies.
Okay.
And then I do have a question, it's probably for you and Ms. Halcombe. The county, how is it going to be using the rest of the 5.6 million that former Assemblymember, now Mayor McCarty allocated to the county?
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Emily Halcon, Director of the Department of Homeless Services and Housing with Sacramento County. And so we went, we've gone back to the board, and it's been fully allocated. About four weeks after the meeting that you attended, Councilmember Talamontes, we went back. The balance was allocated to three projects. One was the Joshua's House project. The second one was the Watt Avenue campus that we're under construction now. And the balance and recognition of sort of budget shortfalls and dependency on one-time funding, we decided to commit to ongoing operations of some of the programs that had previously been committed. And I sent a summary to the mayor's staff, and I apologize, I'm happy to send it to you as well, if that would be helpful, of all the activities that have been funded.
Yeah, that'd be incredibly helpful.
I'll do that.
What I did was different. So I just, I mean, keeping in the loop, and having the city and county truly be a partnership is so important. You know, homelessness is impacting all of us. So if you can send me that memo, I'd greatly appreciate it.
I'll do that.
And that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you. And I just want to note that this partnership agreement is a starting point. It's a foundation. But it's not good enough for the general public. We've got to continue doing more. We've got to continue pushing for more. And we've got to continue working together collectively as partners. Whether it's the city and the county leadership, SHRA, SAC Steps Forward, anyone and everyone that touches homelessness needs to be engaged in these conversations, because that's what the public expects from us. Like, Councilmember Maple, she screams and shouts it, we need a JPA, a Joint Powers Authority. And I'm 100% in line with that. Because homelessness is everyone's issue. It's everyone's number one issue in the Sacramento region, and people don't know lines, it's district, this county property here. People don't know that. People move around Sacramento and expect us to work together. So we, as government leaders, need to do better on that. And I think doing a Joint Powers Authority is so important, and something that I look forward to supporting and continuing to scream and shout to support my colleague on that. And I do want to note that the city of Sacramento is in the county limits. And so I'm happy that we're working together, and we're going to continue providing services to people here. We have a budget deficit here at the city of Sacramento. We're getting less in HAP funds. And so that is important. And, I mean, it's detrimental to the city. And I don't want to be able to, like, I don't want to have to start, stop supporting homeless programs because of the lack of funding that we have. And so I look forward to seeing how we work together to navigate that, whether it's us applying for CalAim dollars, working with the county to help supplement some of these programs. We, we need to sustain our budget, but also help people at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Gera.
Great, thank you very much, Mayor. First, you know, I wanted to extend my gratitude to Brian and his team, and also our county partners, on the progress that we've made and, and where we are today in the, in the working relationship between the city and the county. One, I, I can't, I, I don't disagree at all, and I do believe that a more formalized process is, is important. Because homelessness and the effect on homelessness, particularly for those that, of, of us who have districts that are in between city and county, and another city jurisdiction, see those effects. And, and the housing issue is also a regional issue as well. So it's not a jurisdictional issue, but it's a regional issue. But I, I will say that, you know, the, and I agree, if we can get a Joint Powers Authority put together, that would be, that would, I think, help that way. But the only two ways, frankly, that you can do that is through voluntary agreement between other jurisdictions, or the legislature imposing that on us. And I think that if, the only way we're going to achieve that is by the success of the city and county's partnership agreement. When other folks see, and other jurisdictions see, that we actually have made a significant effect, then we're actually going to be able to move in that process, either through the MOU process to be, create a JPA, or through the legislative process to impose a JPA, one or the other. And so I, that brings me to, I think, this point here, that this is a legally binding agreement. It's a five-year agreement, and that this council and the county voted on, with the option to, to reauthorize for another five years. And so we're at the beginning of year three on this. And I, and I have to say that I'm, you know, that where we are right now is, is very positive. I think there were a lot of pessimists on year one, when we first started, whether this would even last a year, and where we are today, we've learned a lot. We've, all of us have also recognized where our strengths and our weaknesses are as a jurisdiction. And that's helped us better realign how, how we look at providing the best service. I mean, I recall the, the very vocal disagreement about how we should introduce behavioral services. And what we've learned, and our strategy of being able to house people, and then meet them at the, at, at a place where they have stability, and introduce behavioral services, has been much, far much more productive than was when we were going to encampment after encampment, and trying to track people who needed that help and support down. So I think that's a, the, the benefit there. But we are at, at year three, and I feel, I feel very, you know, optimistic about our ability to, to do more with this partnership. And so I would hope that, you know, our council and the county look at revisiting these points. Some of these points are very outdated in the last two years, because we had a different point of view at that time. I think our assumptions were different at that time. And our budget assumptions are also different today as well. So I, I do think that one thing that I'd like to make sure that the city and the county do is, is go back through on these points, and start reevaluating our benchmark goals. And so if we looked at the training section, we went from yellow, and then remember when we had red dots, red dots to yellow to green dots. Now that we're at green dots, we should be thinking about, okay, how do we move back, or do, let's reevaluate, is that a, is that an, a valued point in today's? Or should we reevaluate those benchmarks for our agreement? You know, the, there's no question that I, I think, you know, Councilmember Dickinson brought it up here, that this, this allowed us to do a lot more cross-training, allowed us to better find methods to coordinate together. And, and I think tho, those pieces should be highlighted and, and elevated more. Because for a long time, there was, there was definitely a lot more finger pointing on both sides on, on this issue. And now there's an acknowledgement of, of things, saying, look, we, we have valid concerns for each other's responsibility, but what is the best tool to, to make us, help us move forward? One of the key things that I do want to dive in deeper, and if not, then I'd like to make sure that, you know, Mr. Mayor, that we at least express our concern when the Care Court comes back for evaluation at the legislature, is, is the ability for petitioner's accountability. And since the city can be a petitioner, then we should have the ability to, to be able to know or track at least the progress of that petition, at least on the Care Court side. And that's less of the partnership agreement. On, back to, onto the, the partnership agreement for the, the case of sobering centers, I'm glad that we're working well on the, on the WellSpace campus as a, as a place. But early on in the discussion, we had this, we had brought up, we said, let's, let's make sure we address establishing a, a very reliable sobering center in the city limits. And that's in the partnership agreement, that we wanted one within the city limits. But I do remember the conversation occurring about another sobering center, or other sobering centers in the county, and particularly on the east end of the county. And, and the comment was made during the meeting, that, you know, we shouldn't have a scenario where someone in Folsom or Orangevale is transported to downtown Sacramento when they're in, when they're being, in the need of a sobering center. And so maybe that, that is a question for us to dive into, what, how the county is looking at those, those needs. Because I'm sure there are folks on the east end of the county that, that would need those services. The, the, the other The, the, the other piece, I think, let's see, that was accountability on that piece? A lot of, look, a lot of my comments actually were asked, or questions were put up by the, my colleagues here. I will say that the next piece that I'd like to make sure is, is we get an understanding where SB 43 and capacity is going to affect us. I think Councilmember Dickinson brought that up, and making sure what, how the city is going to execute its authority under SB 43. And then finally, the, I think the, the bigger concern that we, that I, I worry about, which I mentioned earlier, was if HAP funding is going to shift or change, and I know we don't know that conversation until June or the budget happens, but we should be very engaged as, as a united city and county on if we're going to, if we're going to be showing progress, and we want other cities to, to join in on this. If there is any skepticism on the ability to actually execute these programs, then, then that's going to affect our ability to have other partners, because the goal should be, is that every city join in into this same legally binding agreement, whether it's through a Joint Powers Authority, whether it's through a legal MOU, as in this case. But I, my worry here is that we need to be much more vocal about making sure that if we're going to have these successful, that they're, that they're financially successful. Lastly, one of the key things, and I want to highlight again, I agree on the prevention side. Now, the prevention side happens by addressing the housing issue. And one of the key things that with the partnership agreement was the beginning conversation on the, on the affordable housing side. And that's been the responsibility of our housing authority. And so making sure that on the partnership agreement, the evolution of what our expectation is on prevention needs to be now worked out, and be much more, a bigger point. I think the, the urgency in the development of the agreement was addressing the significantly high number of large encampments of people who needed services, and I think that this is a time for us now to be reevaluating all of those pieces in the agreement to have a better outcome. So those are some thoughts there, Mayor, and I just appreciate everyone's diligent work and working together and, and evolving together on, on what is successful and what isn't, and, and acknowledging those, those, those practices that probably weren't as helpful. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have some comments in some direction, I don't, I don't have any questions, but I guess the big picture is, thank you for, for the update and the report. So clearly, the, the number-one issue that the people of Sacramento want us to address is homelessness. No matter where I've gone, as, as mayor for the past three months or for the past year in the campaign, this was clearly the number-one issue wherever I was, and one of the key issues to address this was more cooperation. And the public realizes that these issues don't have boundaries, city nor county, so all levels of government, but especially the city and the county, they saw too much finger-pointing. So I want to applaud the council and our prior mayor for working with the county and coming up with ideas how we can work together, because at the end of the day, we're, we're all in these issues together. So with that, you know, certainly we've had extensive touches. It's mind-boggling, as Councilmembers Dickinson, Maple, and Kaplan mentioned, the amount of touches that you've made versus the amount of people that we have in the system. So it sounds like we almost have a, a real-life point-in-time count with a census as far as who's there, and maybe not everybody, but, you know, having individuals 2,000-plus and 17 touches per, we, we know who a lot of these people are, especially the ones who most interact with, with our city program. So that leads to, the real issue is, is where do people go? You know, where, where do people go? So one thing I do want to highlight is, since the city and the county started talking about this, you know, we've opened 1,000 more beds with the city and county combined. So we've, we've opened roughly 300 in the past several months. We're on track to open 300 more with the 100 in Roseville Road, plus the additional capacity at, in Stockton Boulevard. So I think that, that, that's a positive notion. You know, with that, we certainly have a lot to do. More cooperation is key. I 100% concur with what Councilmember Maple talked about, having structured opportunities for us to talk together, not just us in the county. I think it's, you know, Elk Grove, Rancho Cudover, other jurisdictions, because these issues don't have boundaries. I stood by the idea to create this through legislation last year. The issue doesn't go away, and other, other ideas, we're going to start having structured conversations with County Board of Supervisors and, and council members on this. And, and with that, one idea that I want to direct staff with is, we haven't really talked about it too much tonight, is SHRA. That's a body that we, we all serve on together. I know the county has some ideas as far as what the future of this looks like. They're going to discuss this this week or next week or very soon. So I think it's a timely topic, how we work better on the two issues, housing and homelessness, which are tied together, tied together. So I'd like to, you know, direct city staff to better work with the county and the city in talking about, you know, new approaches and coordinate ways and, and a review of the structure, function, and role of SHRA, and how it relates to housing and homelessness. And they can include, but not be limited to, programs that SHRA currently administers, funding that comes down from the state, federal, and even our local money. Certainly, our, our vouchers and public housing are a piece of the puzzle, and those are key to addressing housing and homelessness, but just wanted to give a, a direction there. I also, I, I appreciate that we jump in a little bit about this every week a bit more, but we're not all there yet. So on, on the budget, we started talking about this with the update for HAP, when we talked about the, the, the Streets to Housing Program in District Two on the Northern Park, Northern Bike Parkway, we talked a bit about this. But I would like to have a more comprehensive approach. So I, I'm going to agendize a full discussion on this in the coming weeks about homelessness and what we are doing. So really focus on three issues. Number one, where, where we are, where we're at, certainly we can have Sacramento Steps Forward give us their latest briefing on the point-in-time count as far as the numbers and kind of what you've done week after week, Mr. Pedro, is tell us what we're doing. What were the sites that we have on, on, online right now, the roughly 1,600, including the 600 new ones? Where the money comes from, who our nonprofit partners are that provide services at these sites, just lay it out there. What are we doing today? And then the, the number-three thing, and the most important piece of that discussion item, is where do we go from here? I know you've touched on this multiple times, is how you said you're trying to be a little bit cheap, which is important, you're, you know, this is our money, our taxpayer money, how to be more efficient and effective. And, you know, we've asked our auditor to come up with some findings to analyze which programs have the biggest results. Some have 60% success rate, some have 30. So which ones are working? And come back with ideas as far as how we can double down on the ones that provide the biggest outcome, but also how we can prioritize and maximize our dollar, because we need to stretch it a bit further. So that will be coming in a few weeks. I, I did want to note that we, we had multiple comments, and Mr. Dickinson alluded to this on the Roseville roadside, it's certainly in your district, but it's a site for the entire city of Sacramento. So I've been out there, I've seen firsthand the issues, and so I know that you are working on a better access route for people to leave the property, because literally the light rail station, you can literally throw a rock to it from the back fence, and to walk around doesn't seem logical, and, and I, I know that we're just about there to having a more direct route, even though we can't go through the Caltrans property on the back. And I, I think you kind of said this, but I just want to reiterate that those, the RVs that we got during the 2020, during COVID, that we had at Cal Expo, I was there when the state unveiled them, and we had people being in them for a temporary basis, and then they sat in the courtyard up north for a couple of years, and so they're out there, they're in their lifeline, and what you're saying is, we're going to phase those out and put in the modular tiny homes, which I saw firsthand, which people appreciate more, more dignity for individuals to store their, store their stuff, work better than the congregate places, and I think is the right way. So in the number of months, you're going to swap out those RVs and have in more permanent tiny homes, which are more practical for us and more beneficial to the residents out there. So thank you for that, for that update. And then lastly, I just wanted the council and the public to know that Mr. Pedro is a very humble individual, but he's excited to announce that after 41 years this weekend, he's retiring from his military service with the United States Government and the Air Force, and so be able to dedicate even more time to the issue of the day. So thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your service, and you're doing a great job, and we look forward to your continued effort on behalf of the City of Sacramento, and literally addressing the issue of the day. You know, you're anonymous to most people in the City of Sacramento, but if you ask the people of Sacramento, what's one issue they want progress on to make it better, not worse, but to have real progress, this is the issue. And so you're the person behind the scenes helping make it happen, so we're counting on you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, this is a receive and file. We have one more council member to punch up, Mr. Pluckevan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry to go out of order. Two quick things. One, I just want to say thank you, both to the county staff and the city staff for being here today. I think one of the things that, that hasn't gotten well-reported over the years that we've been, you know, building this partnership is just how productive and positive the working relationship is between city and county staff, and I just wanted to say thank you again for everything that you're all doing to, to serve all of our citizens. And then I wanted to echo the, the mayor's comment about the need to identify opportunities to build more affordable housing. Obviously, that's a, a key area of opportunity, so if there's anything that we can do to improve or enhance or change our governance model around that, I'm very much interested in, in supporting that direction and, and, and working in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That was a receive and file item. Next item?
Next item is item 16, Sacramento Valley Station Governance Operations Preliminary Recommendations.
Good afternoon, Mayor McCarty and members of the City Council. I'm Lucinda Wilcox, the Assistant Public Works Director, and we're here today to talk about the next steps for the Sacramento Valley Station. And a few of you might recall that about 20 years ago, this facility was in serious trouble. It was still owned by Union Pacific. The station was in serious disrepair, didn't have heating, didn't have cooling, didn't have fire suppression. A lot of it was blocked off from public access, and passenger rail was in, was really suffering. And the region came together and took action, and through that action, the city was able to purchase about 30 acres of land, which included this facility, and by leveraging our Measure A dollars, we have invested hundreds of millions of dollars in infrastructure and renovation efforts at the facility and the surrounding district. And passenger rail is doing a lot better, it's really serving hundreds of thousands of trips, and it's, this is really, truly a regional facility. But at this point, with the crisis averted, the, the facility's kind of gotten out of people's minds, but we feel that we're really at a crossroads again, and to continue the evolution and realize the opportunity of this facility, we think we need to take some additional steps. So I'm here, I want to introduce Greg Taylor, who's our architect, who's been managing the project, and has been instrumental in both increasing operations of the station by working with our partners and bringing in a tremendous amount of grant funds to support our efforts.
Mayor and council members, thank you for this opportunity to brief you on our progress in evaluating governance options for the Sacramento Valley Station. The station is at a crossroads, and as Lucinda said, it's really on the threshold in its development potential as a city and regional asset. Having the right governance structure will be critical to its future success. Before we get into the propositions, the governance propositions that we want to bring before you, I'd like to give, begin with a brief background on what the city has accomplished and through the city's leadership has transformed the station to one of the most successful rail stations in the West. Going back as early as 1996, the city led the vision for what the station could become. With the Capitol Corridor Joint Powers Board, Regional Transit, and Union Pacific Railroad, the city drafted a report that outlined the objectives to redefine the historic station as a true intermodal station. In the early 2000s, preliminary planning began for the site, and when, when the first county Measure A was approved by the voters, the measure specified funding for the Sacramento Intermodal Transportation Facility. In 2006, coinciding with the city's acquisition of the station from the railroad, an MOU between the county and SACRT, quote, "demonstrating the commitment and partnership," was signed. Also in this year, the city embarked on a 11-year, two-phase improvement plan for over $130 million of new improvements and station renovation. And now, more closer to our current date in 2020, the benefits of a four-year process to develop this, the Sacramento Valley Station area plan that went before council in 2021, the city has received a total of $77 million in four consecutive rounds of the Transit and Intercity Rail Capital Program sponsored by CALSTA, known as TERCIP, through partner applications with the Capitol Corridor JPA. So I just have a couple slides here on these projects, past projects, to familiarize yourself or the public what has been accomplished. Phase one, the track relocation of $82.5 million, moved the rail track facilities, built new, new passenger facilities, improved safety by separating the tracks from the passengers by the underground tunnel, and improved overall rail operations. That concluded in 2012. Overlapping with that, in 2012 through 2017, we focused on what we has defined as Phase Two, to renovate the station. These are, I'll have two slides here on the before and afters of the station, which transformed the station into a, a full-functioning center for Amtrak and also brought leased space to the city and also some small retail opportunities on the ground floor. And here's the interior, and maybe many of you have seen the interior, main waiting room there in the lower right. So the, the station, as I mentioned, is one of the highest-performing in the nation. Locally on the Capitol Corridor, the station outperforms the two next highest in Davis and Emeryville by a factor of more than two to one. This year, they're expecting to be close to a million passengers. Capitol Corridor and the San Joaques, which both serve the station, are ranked four and six nationwide, and behind the Pacific Surfliner in Southern California, ranked number one for all the state-supported services. And overall, the station is ranked the 11th-highest Amtrak ridership in the U.S. as of 2023. Planned service expansions in 2025 include for the Capitol Corridor, increasing four additional trains, and the San Joaquin, and, and two additional trains coming this year. And all this is in the context of what we are here locally building with our new athletic events opportunities, the central shops, entertainment in the rail yards that will bring local placemaking and opportunities for people to come to the, to the local downtown region, but also expand access into the Bay Area and Central Valley through these commuter operations. And this slide, I think, really captures the, that potential where the, the SVS, as we call it, the Sacramento Valley Station sits in the middle of all these just amazing in development opportunities and creating the city around. We are really uniquely positioned nationwide to have the ability to create a new expanded station within the area of a currently developing brownfield site. That doesn't happen everywhere in this country, and it's a real opportunity that we have, and also the connections to the, to our adjacent important districts around the, the site. So our preliminary recommendations that we'd like to take before you has come with the work over the past year with our consultant team of WSP and city staff through committees that are formed, meeting on a monthly basis, to bring you these preliminary recommendations. But first, we, we should just ask the question, why look at governance? The city, while the city's been very successful, as demonstrated in delivering these first two large capital improvements, the third phase is a unique challenge. The focus of the third phase is to greatly expand the transit operations integrated with land development. At present, however, the city is struggling to keep up with the current operations and maintenance of the, of the current station. We've had great success in capital improvements, our operations funding is, is another matter. It's been a struggle. The city does not have The city does not have direct access to rail and transit funds. The $77 million in state funds was made only possible through the partnership with the Capitol Corridor that, and that future opportunities have limitations going forward. City taxpayers, through the general fund, covers a majority of the operations and maintenance of the station today for what is a regional facility. Current Measure A does not cover operations funding. And we have found that through our research, other entities, other municipalities, other governing agencies that have a single focus on the station are geared and set up for more, more success. So with a structure that is focused on the station, that can be singularly focused on the new station, new opportunities can present themselves. Our research found that focused governance structures are more agile and secure in funding for multiple sources and do not rely solely on grants, but engage the private sector and find a broader source of revenue sources. Their independence can leverage opportunities beyond what the municipal model can deliver. The other driving point was the need for a structure that had a singular focus on building a transit-oriented district where the ability to leverage public-private developments towards funding, the operations and maintenance of the transit-oriented district is paramount. So the area plan, the governance plan, that model that we had, had a mission and that was defined as creating a governance structure that can achieve a vision of the facility and district as a regional asset. The goals are that it is a place for people, it is vibrant, that there is an experience that also connects, that is an experience in and of itself and that it also connects people to the events and activities in the rail yards, Doca waterfront and all those surrounding activity areas. And that is a mobility hub that promotes increasing equality in transportation, connecting people throughout the Sacramento region and Northern California. So this is the area that would be under the governance within the Sacramento area plan and the transit facilities that are located in the plan are shown in purple. The yellow are development opportunities set forth in the plan and public open space outlined there in green. We looked at a number of case studies throughout the country, stations larger and some smaller about the size of our own, and what we found is that no other city municipality manages a major regional transportation facility like this on its own and it therefore relies on partner agencies that best fit the particulars of each station. This ranges from dedicated county authorities to transit-oriented JPAs, nonprofits and transit agencies in and of themselves. Working through a series of workshops with city staff, we identified two baseline assumptions of independence and a need for partners which the governance structure should meet. These three alternatives that we show here met those thresholds. They are not meant to be mutually exclusive, they could transition from one entity to another, and also multiple entities could coexist and serve specific purposes. Consensus for a special district as the strongest model, consensus, excuse me, was for a special district as the strongest model, but realizing that does require a lot of dedicated effort to set up and implement. The nonprofit corporation provides the most flexibility and can be formed relatively quickly and be the independent face of the district. The JPA as a lead structure would not accomplish all of our objectives, but could coexist under the nonprofit for specific purposes if needed. So examples include Washington DC Station is governed by a nonprofit structure. Denver Union Station used a nonprofit to great success in its early formation and San Diego has long had the Center City Development Corporation, which is a nonprofit structure as well. So our recommended steps here are the phase, phase one for forming a nonprofit corporation. In the next two years, there would be a, I'm gonna, our slides are kind of, the fonts are kind of messed up there, but we can, we can still read it. The entity formation would begin over a tier process as an independent, project-focused organization as the face of the station and as I said, best able to be, set that unique brand and visualize what the SVS can become. It would proceed with development and starting to take over the development projects that we have funding for and move forward towards full build-out and operations. But within that first two years would also be the charge of the nonprofit is to actually do the due diligence, to investigate the special district and, and see if it is a viable alternative and take, take that forward in a vote that would determine whether the organization moved forward with the special district or continue as a nonprofit corporation. So what we see before you today, where we're at, is we're still in, in analysis phase. We have this recommendation, but we're still doing diligence. We will be briefing and incorporating our feedback from our partners to redefine the recommendation. We'll explore the viability of the recommended alternative, the outreach and implementation planning, working with identified partner agencies and continuing to evaluate funding sources and strategies. And we plan to return to council with final recommendation by the end of the year. Today, what we ask is that we have a few questions for you that, and others, we entertain questions from, from you as well, of course, but we wanted to understand what, what you think we should consider as we explore these alternatives? What should the city's role be in the future of the station? And how would the city council or individual members of council like to be involved in the ongoing partner discussions? So with that, concludes my presentation. Be glad to take questions.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Oh, we have public first?
Oh, okay. Robert.
Mayor, I don't have any speakers on this agenda item.
Okay, no public comment. Councilmembers, Councilmember Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor. And Greg, thanks for the presentation and Lucinda, you know, looking at your history, I seem to recall there might have been a supervisor who was a little bit involved in that, that agreement between the county and the city and the CCJPA back in 2006. You know, I think what's been done and illustrated in the slides you showed with, with the station has, has been remarkable. I think probably the only, the only error that was made was, was probably naming the passageway for Steve Kohn, but outside of, outside of that, I think it all looks pretty, pretty good. You didn't tell Steve I said that, by the way.
I meant to invite him today, I'm sorry.
But in any case, I would, I don't have questions, but I do have a thought or two, which may not surprise you. I do think the development corporation, or you call it a nonprofit corporation, I would call it a development corporation, is, is the optimal direction to, to take because if you go, I mean, you don't have to go back to the slide, but because there are development opportunities within the envelope of, of what we think of as the SVS property or site, it seems to me that a development corporation is the, is the best approach to take advantage of those development opportunities. It's a form, and in and of itself, that's not governance, I don't think. That's, that's, that's more directed at, at how you optimize the use of the property for value capture for the purpose of helping to, to finance the public improvements to the, to the property. And that's, that's really where we find ourselves. I mean, hopefully there will continue to be funding available through TERCIP and other, and other avenues, through SB1 and other things that come along as, as we continue to move into the future. Hopefully the, if not right now, there'll be a day when, once again, federal funding is, is robust to support Amtrak and intercity rail investment and improvement. But, but I think the success that we see of some of those examples you pointed out, such as Washington, Denver, other places, is they've taken advantage of the development opportunity of the site itself. And that, and that, that has been manifested both within the walls, so retail opportunities, I mean, if you look at Union Station, Washington, or you look at Denver, two prime examples, I mean, they've taken advantage of retail opportunities within the walls of the structure. To some extent, these locations you've, you've talked about have taken advantage of, of development opportunities that are part again of the, of the, of the surrounding area. And I, I think it's a development corporation or nonprofit corporation, as you've described it, that, that creates the greatest potential to, to realize a return and to generate the funding that we need to augment whatever we get in the way of public resources. And I hope there will be another transportation measure locally and that it will, in fact, include a, include a specific allocation or recognition of investment in Sacramento Valley Station because it, as you point out quite rightly, it's, it's a regional asset. It's unrealistic, in my estimation, to think that surrounding governments as governmental units are going to put a lot of money into the station. You know, folks take advantage of it, but the, but the response is, yeah, and they, and they come and spend their money and contribute sales tax to the city of Sacramento and they come and they sit in an office in the city of Sacramento next to the station if they go there or they go to attractions, they go to the theater, whatever it is. So the city of Sacramento is the one that's realizing the return in terms of public revenue from that. We're not realizing it in winters or in Auburn and so on. So I mean, just realistically, having been around this block a few times, I, I think it's, it's wiser to focus on, on how they can contribute in a way that allows them to be part of the, of the fabric, but doesn't really directly say, okay, in order to do that, you gotta, you gotta bring your checkbook to the table. Maybe they bring it in a different way. Maybe they bring it through participation in the CCJPA or the San Joaquin's. I don't know if Amtrak has been a partner in any of these station development efforts around the, around the country, but I mean, maybe we talked, talked to Amtrak about being a partner. Certainly, in my estimation, we ought to be talking to the state of California, Caltrans, rail division and beyond, and up.
Yeah, we are.
For sure. So I think we'd have, I think we'd have significant interest in being part of a development corporation. And then the, the governance side of that obviously is determined by who becomes the board and what's the, what's the designation of responsibilities and authority for the, for the board. In that regard, I would think a JPA is at least going to be quicker, may not be better in all regards, all respects, but if you want to become a special district, you got to go through the legislature. So if you want to do something sooner rather than later, stay away from the white big building over there. And again, some of us have some experience in how long it takes you to get through that, get through that building, just a little, just a little. Maybe it's jaundice, I don't, I don't, I don't know about that. But you know, a JPA obviously is the, a meeting of the willing. And so again, I think, I think we have people who would be partners. I think RT would be, certainly be a partner as well as some of the others I've mentioned. So, you know, I'm excited by the prospect. People do not understand some of the things you, that we're the 11th most heavily used Amtrak station in the country. We've slipped a little bit with the Capitol Corridor and the San Joaquin's. They used to be the second and fifth most heavily used intercity rail services in the country. Now we're fourth and sixth, but we're going to be back up. I mean, people, people don't realize that Californians do take the train and, and that's only going to increase over time for a whole host of reasons. So I'm, I'm very bullish on this, in case you can't tell. I'm excited about what we can do there, have been obviously for, for a long time. I'd like to be very much involved as you're thinking about, about the direction you, you want to take. And I think that, that we, we have great opportunities to put together something that is both regional in, in nature, but, but also adept and able to be nimble. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pluckebon?
I'd like to associate myself with all of those comments, except for the one about the tunnel. I think this council, you'll find strong support for transit, for trains, anything that we can do to, to support that effort. Obviously, we're going to need to go back out to the voters for another Measure A and I'm looking forward to supporting that work. Thank you for bringing this forward and for working on this for all these years. I can't wait to see the San Joaquin line and all these lines coming through our city and, and providing greater access at a, at a more reliable and lower cost. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Guerra?
Yeah, thank you. One, I completely agree with Councilmember Dickinson on, on the need to look at this as, as a more of a development corporation, looking at it holistically and including all of those partners. And, and I'm reminded of the transit-oriented district that we created on, on 65th Street, when that perspective of the entire area where it used to be just the light rail stop and then a bunch of warehouses. And that was just, it was like, it was the easiest and closest way to put a light rail station, all right there. But there was nothing there that was successful. And those, all those Jackson property warehouses that were abandoned now are, you know, a hotel and, you know, Riot Favors Gym and now housing that we're doing there. And back then, Councilmember McCarty appointed me to the 65th Street Rack to look at those conversations, but the focus was around the, you know, how do we combine all those interests? I think where the gap was on that time, it was, oh, well, this is the RT property and that's all we do at the RT property. And I think this is an opportunity to learn from that, I think, narrow window, you know, and say, how do we look at, at that entire facility being fully encompassed with services? I mean, when you're walking down the Steve Kohn walkway, there's all this open space that could be actually something that could, that could be bringing in revenue generation or make it an interest for people to use it more. And, you know, some of us used to use it a lot for, to go see the Raiders games, you know, very, very, very regularly. And what a great experience that was. And you know, even, even this right now with the opportunity for kids to be able to use it, to join their families and, and take advantage of that, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't provide that amenity. Okay, so one thing, yes, it should be, I think, in a forum that looks at all of those components. One message that I hope does not get lost, it is a regional asset. So in the development of the governance structure and in the development of how we move forward, we need to make sure that we're thinking about how does it become a regional asset? And how do, how does it get recognized as a regional asset and not just a city of Sacramento property? Because that I think, that I think is, is going to be the success of it, is if we can think about that. And I don't know what the solution to that is. I know that when we looked at Measure B and Measure A and Measure A, you know, I don't want to call it A-plus, but A the next day, that failed on the ballot, you know, the, we recognize, at that point, there was a group of us that recognized, hey, this is a regional asset and we're going to put this, the, the amount of money off the top to make sure that we support that. So in the development of how we look at the governance structure and we need to make sure that that's a, a guiding principle on that, on that piece. Second, I mean, the recognition that we're not a, the city's not a transit agency, so we can't apply for a lot of those transit dollars. I think something of urgency is important in figuring out whether it's Capitol Corridor or what other agency can, can do that. I almost feel that depending on the urgency for access to grants, there's nothing, I think, wrong with having a two-step process. Say, you know, a joint powers authority or another longer-term governance structure or something, if there's, if there's the immediate to get something moving with the process of, okay, this is how the, the final structure should look at, maybe we look at, at those processes. So that would be my, but I, but I think my guiding thing is, is really we have to figure out how to make this, one, financially sustainable in the long run. When I go visit my family in Mexico City, all of the stations there are linked with small businesses, they're linked with services that people use on a regular basis. When you think about, hey, I gotta, in the morning, you draw, you get your coffee, your, the cleaners or the, you know, or, and your kids. So those three things, like if you're not involving in those in one way or another, then it's, then it just becomes a, a stop. And I think it's got to be more than just a stop. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan?
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have staff put up the last slide that says the questions that we need to answer? Because I want to make sure that that's, that's focused and preeminent of direction that we're being asked to, to, to answer.
The next steps, I'm sorry?
Yeah, the next steps.
The next slide? The questions.
Yes. Yes, that one, thank you. I will agree, we need to form a, some sort of governance structure. I think I'm in alignment with most of my colleagues, but I want to be thoughtful. But I hear we need to do something right away. But if that doing something right away means maybe we partner with an organization if it's because we need grants or it's because we're potentially missing out on money, but I want to be thoughtful because once you set up a new governance structure, that's the governance structure you're set with. So whether the right thing is a JPA, something else, I want to be thoughtful in how do we do the business improvement district, but also recognize, like Councilmember Guerra said, it's a regional amenity. So how much should the region be involved as well as improving the rail yards and to the success of the rail yards, but understanding the success of the governance structure? So what does that look like in its best form? I want us to be thoughtful, but also be aware if we need to partner with another organization because we can't be the author of getting grants or funding, that we have that process set up as we have that conversation. But I think what really guides us, and I want to think about it, is what is our mission and what is our vision for this? And then what structure best allows us to implement that vision and that mission? Because that will guide the purpose and everything to make it a success. And I trust those of you who've done the work and see what other organizations have done across the United States and the structure that they've set it up, what closely aligns mostly with Sacramento, I think is the best of what we should look at. Knowing that, as we do this, don't forget that transit moves people, but we also need to invest in the transit-oriented development to make it so that people can live, work, and play within an area of walking distance, biking distance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Maple?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with a lot of my colleagues have said. I have a couple of questions. One is around the JPA idea. Do you have a sense, and this is asking your opinion more so, but do you have a sense of the likelihood of us being able to establish something like a JPA? Do you see that as being like a difficult path, given the city's ownership in it? Who would be the partners?
Well, I think what we've found, we see that there may be an opportunity for a JPA to exist within the development or nonprofit corporation. The JPAs tend to seem to work best if they're kind of mutually aligned, like the transportation authorities and the transportation, running the transportation entity of this transit-oriented development would be a key way for a JPA to work together for all their interests. If you bring a JPA into a structure that has multiple interests, development, transit, these other things, I think that's a more difficult structure for the JPA to function well under. You're bringing, everybody has their interests that are coming to the table in the JPA. Whereas we found the nonprofit corporation setting that as an entity that relies, would be made up of experts that help develop their different aspects of the station, not necessarily elected officials, pardon me, but for that reason, to really look at the expertise that would guide the station and would be a way to move forward the most expeditiously with the best, we think, the best results. So there, as I said in that, we use that Venn diagram, there's not, there is plenty of opportunity for these three structures to coexist in some form. And we really think that if we can get to the special district over time, that funding security would be the ultimate game. But we know that that is a very high hurdle, and we, that's why I think the theme here is we want to get going and not wait for that. So we want to establish a structure to start us on our way in our journey and develop this as we go.
Okay, that makes sense. And in that vein, I would be, you know, supportive of exploring structures that allow you to move quickly and nimbly because things are going to change. I also had a question about how this kind of coordinates or intermixes with the rail yards project in general. Of course, we know that there's a lot more happening in the space surrounding just this piece of land and if we're thinking about all of that in combination.
In the rail yards project itself, you say? Yes. Well, for one, I believe we're scheduled May for the term sheet coming forward, that the two properties that would go Lot 40 and Lot 44 would be, they're shown on the diagram, be a significant asset for the station, for the development corporation to build on for that funding. But we're also, we have three projects right now working with Downtown Rail Yards Partnership that we received funding for, for TERSA. This summer will be starting, they'll be starting the construction of a new entrance from the Steve Cone Passageway into the Central Shops Plaza District that's being under construction. So that was TERSA money back in 2020, so we're looking forward to that. We have a segment of Fifth Street that was funded that will allow our regional bus connector routes to more efficiently access the station via Fifth Street to the freeway. That will be, that's coming to you next month for our construction agreement. And then we just recently in 2024 round, received $4 million towards construction to complete the extension of Burkitt Street down from, to the mouth of our tunnel that we built in 2012 that has never been open for pedestrian bikes because it didn't have a connection to the public way. And that will also serve as the indoor route turnaround for SACRT. We're expanding the cul-de-sac there so their buses can turn around, layover, have a restroom facility dedicated to the drivers, and that serves the rail yards, Regent Kaiser for drop-off there. So we are definitely integrated all the way through with the rail yards.
Love to hear it.
Other projects on the works too.
On the horizon. A lot of really great work by the team, and just want to thank you for that, too, and the entire city team for this, because it's, we're clearly collaborating with all these partners. It's just, it's a lot of work in the making. And one of the last questions I have is around, I think this is Capitol Corridor and Amtrak. Do they currently pay the city anything in order to use this space?
No, no, it's not set up that way. They, Amtrak is the, so people don't understand this generally, Amtrak owns the trains that go interstate, that go through our station, the Zephyr and the Coast Starlight. Those are Amtrak operated, owned and operated trains. The state owns all the rail equipment for the Capitol Corridors and the San Joaquin's, and they hire, they contract with Amtrak to run the service. So it's a state-operated. But we hold, we inherited the lease when we acquired the station in 2006, that Amtrak is the prime tenant and works out of the station. And their lease terminates the first round in 2026, but they have three five-year options to 2041. That came with our acquisition.
And thank you for that background, and I think it's helpful for the public, too, to understand all of that. I just, really broadly, I think, you know, this is, there's a lot of history in this space, too, and that's actually one of my favorite parts about it. I think this is probably one of the, generally speaking, the rail yards is one of the largest, you know, infill projects that's in the United States of America that's left to do. And it's got an amazing connection to our history. It's the terminus of the transcontinental railroad, and I think it's one of the best investments that we could be doing is thinking about this holistically, as Councilmember Kaplan mentioned, thinking about it in terms of how can we connect to housing, transit-oriented development, to biking, and especially to our transit infrastructure so that people can get around. And so this is all connected, interconnected in my mind. And so just really appreciate the work and want to say that now that our colleague, Mr. Dickinson, is serving as the representative in the Capitol Corridor, JPA, through SACRT, I think there might be some opportunities for further conversations about how that partnership could work as we continue forward. But just really appreciate it, and I think my comments would be centered around how can we move quickly and nimbly to create a structure? Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to Councilmember Dickinson.
I just, the conversation reminded me that, for those of you who may not know or recall, Light Rail was originally constructed through a JPA, which was the city of Sacramento, the county of Sacramento, Sacramento Regional Transit, and the state of California, the Sacramento Transit Development Agency. So, I mean, it's not, we don't, it's not as if we don't have something of a model right here in our own backyard of putting together an entity. Now, that obviously was for development of the line itself, not the development associated with it, but it's something that we should keep in mind, I think, as you move ahead with this. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Just some perspective and some insight here. So I forget a lot of things in this world, but I remember vividly sitting over there in Mr. Guerra's seat 19 years ago, talking about this and having some of our same-city staff here and thinking, this is imminent, imminent. And in my head, I had been recently to, at that time, to, I think, our first cap-to-cap delegation, went to Union Station, be like, oh, we can have this in a couple of years. And certainly been to downtown L.A. and seen Union Station there and New York City and other cities and thought, this is just right around the corner. So, one, it takes time. And we had serious infrastructure issues, you know, legacy impacts there that, what's that?
Bankruptcy.
Bankruptcy with the, you know, the Thomas Development Team, but we can see and touch closeness, like the courthouse. Roger, when's the courthouse open over there, the county courthouse? Soon, right?
The new one?
Yeah.
The new one, I've been told, it should be open before the end of the year, but then I heard someone else say it might not be till mid '26.
Okay, well, that's soon, so better than 19 years.
Better than 19 years.
Yeah, and then we're all going to the, we're all going to the groundbreaking of the new Kaiser Hospital, and that's a four-year project. And then hopefully we'll start construction of the soccer stadium there, and there's the shops, and there's two housing developments. So we're there. There's some projects that are in the rail yards that are open, so, you know, this is imminent. And I think one of the things which is key, which we heard from all the council members and about stations here, but also internationally in Mexico, which Mr. Garrett talked about, is that these are bustling places of commerce. And I think that these opportunities just aren't there yet because we don't have a lot there. We had a Starbucks there, we've had starts and stops with retail there, and, you know, you think, wow, this would be an amazing place for a brewery. Why would someone not want to use this historic place and, you know, Rail Yard Brewery or something like that? But there's not enough people there. It's just, there's not enough people there, you know?
Yeah, we have over 17,000 square feet on the ground floor that we've entertained. Prior to COVID, we were shopping, looking for, you know, Bikes and Brew, any creative things. We have set up for Marketplace. It just hasn't, there hasn't been that synergy there yet, so, to your point.
Yeah, but I am optimistic because, as Councilmember Dickinson noted, this is one of the most bustling lines and growing lines in America, the Capitol Corridor. I love going there, going down, catching a ballgame in the Bay Area, you know, taking those trains. And we see that, but there's just not enough commerce and housing built around there. But I see that, we're close to that tipping point. So I'm optimistic that, one, it's not a drain on the city budget, that we can get revenue from our tenants to help pay for the needed upgrades and just maintenance, so it's not a loser but a winner for the city of Sacramento. And as far as the structure, I don't know the answer, and I'll leave it to you in focusing on the examples from across the nation. But I do know what I heard earlier is that it's very unlikely that any jurisdiction's going to want to help at all. They have their own needs, costs are going in their own communities, they have their own legacy infrastructure obligations as well. But does it mean they can't serve on this body and help us, you know, get in line for SAICOG funding, you know, apply for, you know, federal funding? So strength in numbers. And so I think when we focus on that, it's not that we're looking for you to help us with your general fund, but being part of the governing structure. So, and then lastly, as far as, I do recall that the Measure A, the legacy Measure A we're living with right here did help us tremendously. So maybe someone can remind me, and you or anybody else in the council, so the Measure A-ish measure that did not succeed recently, what would that have done to help the rail yards, the station?
That did have $1 million towards operations.
Annually?
Yes.
An increase, yeah. And what would that have been used for?
We, well, we have ongoing current maintenance, increasing security, but we've, you know, we're getting the stations moving on, so we've got deferred maintenance that we need to pick up and so on like that. So it would definitely have been a huge asset for us.
Yeah, and is that what our ask will be for the next measure, again, a million, ongoing?
We need to evaluate that in the whole scheme of everything.
Yeah. And back to our, back to the leases idea, and so give us some hope for the Bikes and Brew or other vision there. Do you have any real tangible, not just optimism, but insight as far as based upon what we're seeing there, what projects are coming online right now or about to break ground, as far as what increased retail activity we can see there?
Well, we do, Plug for Sourdough and Company is our ground floor tenant that's doing quite well down there, and they're actually doing some catering out of there as well, plus their open hours. We have the second floor primarily leased, the state has, is a big tenant, and so those are good for getting revenue in. But we are looking to find ways to create activities and create, especially with the coming athletics. We're improving our wayfinding, we're painting the canopies leading out to West Sacramento, a bright blue color that kind of ties to the waterfront colors. We're talking in Capitol Corridor how we can maybe coordinate some late trains, that's in discussion. So we're trying to, you know, capitalize on those events, create opportunities for food trucks, food, music, and start to creating that place and just starting to get, you know, that start of the hum, getting it in people's minds that it's just not a train station, but it's a place to come where things are happening. So that's kind of the first step.
And lastly, what's the timeline that you would like to have us focus on governance change going forward?
We plan to come back by the end of the year with a more formal recommendation. We're doing our diligence, we're going to be exploring the business case and developing, getting more into the numbers, and we'll have, putting more of the skin on the bones of this idea that we're moving forward with and be able to come back with you, to you by the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate your interest in this long.
Thank you for the presentation. Yes. Yes, this was a receivable file, no vote on this item. That is the final item on the agenda. We do have public comment?
We do. Mayor, do you want to do council comments, ideas, and questions first or public comment?
Public comment first.
Wonderful. I have 15 speakers, so I'll call a few off. Please line up in the middle aisle. Chris Baker, Robert Alvis, Fernando Burton, McWorthy, Juana James, then Mac.
That matters not on the agenda, I didn't hear it.
This is for matters not on the agenda?
Okay.
Public comment for matters not on the agenda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. I haven't been here in a while, but I don't know if you guys turn on the TV sometimes. I get tired of hearing about the, you know, we're cold, the negativity of South Sacramento, Florence Road, Franklin and Mac, oh, a shooting or this or that. But we never talk about good things that's going on on Franklin and Mac Road and that corridor. So I say, what can I do about it? I'm going to show you some pictures of this thing works. Does it, well, I'm going to show you this. This is Food for Less. I worked behind the scenes, Councilmember Vang was in then, and bought Food for Less there, okay? They did exceptionally numbers, ahead above what they expected, and due to that, this has been working behind the scenes for years. We're going to have one of the best innovative quick car washes and Dutch Brothers there. Food for Less had to give up some parking stalls that they were not using. So that's what's going on in South Sacramento, some good things. I wish when I turn on the TV I could hear, hey, this is going on on Franklin and Mac, look at what the beautification going on here on Mac Road. That's what I would like to see. And second of all, you all have the forms there. Five years ago, I was given a task to work with this reentry program, and it's one of the federal ones. And five years ago, there was mandate set on them, and not neither one, besides one council member that's down the street, have visited them. Now, there's a graduation March 6th, and I think it would be good if one of y'all or all of you can come there and look at these people in the face and say, thank you for taking part in the First Step Act. We see these people, they were federally incarcerated, but they have achieved milestone goals, got their families back, working for Caltrans, working for the state, working for the county. But when we put all these restrictions on them, nobody's been there to pat them on the back and say, thank you, well done.
Thank you for your comments. Your speaker time is complete. Our next speaker is Robert Alvis.
Thank you, guys, for, uh...
Thank you, guys, for taking these comments. My name is Robert Alvis, I own GD Theaters, which operates the Crest Theater and the Empress Tavern Restaurant right up the street. I've noticed something over the last couple of weeks I wanted to bring to your attention. We, as we know, when there's events at the Golden One Center or at the Capitol Mall, the Capitol Garage goes to surge pricing, all-day event pricing at fifteen dollars instead of the normal seven. Over the last couple of weeks, and most recently this Sunday, the City Hall Garage has randomly gone to all-day event parking at fifteen dollars when there are no events. And so, like, this last Sunday, I had thirty families come to the Crest, and they used the City Hall parking garage, and asked me, why is this garage that's ninety percent empty charging fifteen dollars for an all-day event that doesn't exist? So, I don't know who's making that decision, I just wanted to bring it to your guys' attention, have someone look into it. Like I said, I know, you know, if there's a big concert at Caesar Chavez Park, parking goes up with demand. But when my customers see that there isn't the demand, they're less likely to come back, and we need more people coming downtown, not less. So, anything we can do to encourage that, I would appreciate. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Yeah, just for our curiosity, we'll, we'll look into it, and so, the, the individual who oversees our parking division will meet you in the back to get your information.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Fernando Burton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I'm disappointed that my representative has left the dais. I, I've lived in Midtown, District Four, for thirty years, and I'm calling, I've, I've come here out of frustration. Since March of twenty twenty-two, there had been twenty-five accidents at the intersection of Nineteenth and O Street. Some have been very serious. One I know is a motorcyclist who went over the, over a, the hood of a car. The, the motorcycle submarined into a parked car, and the motorcyclist was likely paralyzed. I know because I called nine-one-one, and he said he couldn't feel his legs. The reason I'm here is that there's a proposal for a development at Nineteenth and Capitol that's gonna have two-hundred-and-fifty-two multi, multi-unit residences, hundred-and-fifty-five parking spaces. You combine all of that, those cars with the edict of return to work, you've got staff from the East End Project, you're gonna have more cars affecting that intersection, and I'm tired of the platitudes from public work staff that, we'll look into it, we'll research it, and that's why I'm here, out of frustration. I don't know what can be done, but I'm tired of dealing with city staff, because I get no response. Twenty-five accidents at Nineteenth and O. You've got, you've got, at the rail yards, already built in the, the stoplights, but established neighborhoods like Midtown are, are being ignored. That in rail yards is future planning, that's the way it should be. Established neighborhoods, it's catch-up, and we have not caught up. So, we need to, we need to do something, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mac Worthy, then Twana.
I don't know where I should start, but what we hear here is everybody kicking for the city to make money. Nobody saying about things can go here that the people can make money. How many of you really know what a nonprofit organization is? Shallow Arms and the Kennedy State, Black Fools Lost, that was nonprofit. Nonprofit all the way from Washington, D.C. here, you gotta know how to use it. I tried to get it in with the previous mayor, we own it. Black folks own their own nonprofit, buy low-income house and do it. But we see things like the DA come in and tell you, I'm using brother to brother to snatch on other people downtown. You're gonna see some killing going here, and it should be, because I know how my daddy taught me. I commit a crime with you, you tell it, I kill you, you, you tell it, vice versa. And then we look at the county and city, five million dollars over here, what do SHRA do? Where's the black voice in Sacramento? We have no media. I am the only black voice here. Where were the others that come in here and got paid? People, if you wake up and understand that, that a six bill, it didn't cover you all, if you commit crime that, which have been committed here, you don't get to, twice to do it. But here now, the DA gonna go to be a psychologist and he, what you doing, are you stealing to eat, or what you stealing for? That was made by the DA. You getting ready to, Bill Moggell, that's what you getting ready to do. Flea bargaining done it in the mid-seventies. Nine percent of all the cases that go here is people owned by a public defender, a public defender who worked for the state. You don't have a five-star law firm here in this town, no more, just like here, you don't have it here in this city.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Twana James, then Mac.
I, I want to know if we can get an appointment with you, so we can tell you our concerns about our place. We are, there's people that are afraid to go back because we, we might get thrown out for being here, and I don't think that's right. And the blankets, what he was talking on, I had to go to my church and get blankets for them. There's, it's not, no, there's not unlimited blankets. People are freezing there. And just have a heart and, and listen to people that are there. Give, have a, a survey every six months or something, and send it to the people that live there. Let them show their concerns, you know, we're here for a reason, because there's things wrong there, and we're just asking if we can get an appointment with you and, and just tell you our concerns. Is that agree, can we agree on that, that we can get one before I leave? Because I'm not leaving here unless we get one. You take me to jail, you can do whatever, I'm not leaving here until we get one. And that's all, I'm, I'm, just listen to the people that live there, that's all, I mean, we're not doing this for nothing, we're not complaining about nothing, give people blankets. And you know what they're, okay, they're moving out, the two people, two trailers, they moved out today. They, they're moving them out, they're keeping people in the trailers. They're not doing what they're saying they're doing. You need to keep them accountable for what they're, what they're saying. That, every, almost everything he said, not everything, I'm not gonna say that, but most of it, they, you know, it was, it was lie, because they're not, they're not checking in on the people that are doing, you know, working there. The, the staff over there tortures people, and we should be able to say this without getting thrown out. I, I broke my arm, because he wanted to hurry up and get people in there. I busted my teeth out. You think anybody asked me if they can help me get my teeth done? No. And my arm, I just got my arm out for cash three months because of uneven pavement there. And I just, oh, sorry, I just think that you guys should, you should give me, give us a chance, could we?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Our next speaker is Mac, then Henry Harry.
I think this speaks to those hierarchical structures that I, like, talked about last time, because that, because then the expertise, right, was given to this man who is not on the ground, and it was said to you, like, all of these things were happening, and then you have people who are actually the experts of what they're experiencing, walking in here, telling you that it's not. So, I think that needs to be taken very seriously, that these hierarchical structures actually cause y'all delayed feedback loops, and ma, and makes it so where I'm coming back a week later, and folks are still freezing and don't have blankets. Y'all know, my name is Mac, my pronouns are they/them, and I come today as a friend of residents of the Rosewood Campus, Rosewood Campus. I think, again, right, this need for the feedback loops, you guys have already heard, they have mold, freeze, they're freezing at night, a week later, and they're still cold, they're still cold. And that was why the residents really would like to meet with you, Roger Dickinson, it's your campus, it's in your district. Can you point to maybe who your staff members are in the room? None of them?
Yeah.
Okay, would it be possible to get somebody down before we left so we could just get a card and, because they have tried to email all of you. That's how it started. They actually tried to reach out to your office, and they tried to reach out to many of y'all's office about this well before they came in here today, and it has continuously gone on deaf ears. I think, you, you know, we don't show up unless we have to. People tried to call you, people tried to say this, people can't go to the director because, again, these not, these hierarchical structures means that if this one person doesn't like you, that means that you don't get help, but other people do. And so, like, creating feedback loops that allow for a non-hierarchical, like, there needs to be many people that people get to go to. There needs to be many people along the way that people get to talk to about the needs that they have, not just like one person who's in charge of everything, because then if you get on their bad side, you, you, you want somebody who can be, you can't talk to them.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Henry Harry. Thank you, Mac. Henry Harry, then Julie Verga, then Susan Falcone. I don't see Henry, Julie. Following Julie is Susan Falcone, Athena Pagano.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm very involved in the election this year, and so, I thought I'd need to come down.
Will you start over, your timer, your mic was turned off?
You bet.
Please proceed.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to come down here today to say something that you may not hear very often, which is thank you. I appreciate your time and your energy. I, I really thought it was time that I come down here and see you guys in action, I hadn't done that yet this year. And it's hard work, it's a lot of paying attention to a lot of little details, and I, I appreciate a renewed commitment to leadership, and I see a new energy in the city council that I've not seen in the past, and I really appreciate that. And one of the things that I do want to bring to your attention that I, I hope you will seriously consider as we go forward, because you were talking about prevention, and how prevention can make such a big difference. And preventing animals from overpopulating is really gonna be key to changing Sacramento, and I, I'm confident that you all will be supportive of spay-neuter efforts that we all are gonna be collaborating together to make going forward. So, that's it, thank you very much.
Susan, then Athena?
I'm Athia.
Okay, Athia?
Yeah.
Do I see Susan, I don't see any movement, so please proceed. So, Susan, after you, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Athia Pagano. I'm a certified humane education specialist with twenty-five years in the animal care field. I have worked with many shelters throughout California during those years, and I believe that spay-neuter is the foundation of population control, and because of that, I have built a mobile spay-neuter program from the ground up, so I have a thorough understanding of all things spay-neuter in the state of California. Currently, Sacramento faces a major issue. Hundreds of unaltered foster dogs remain in limbo due to a seven-to-eight-month wait period for spay-neuter. The city, as the technical owner of these animals, carries the liability for roughly one thousand unaltered animals. If any of them escape, bite someone, harm another animal, or cause an accident, this opens Sacramento to legal and financial risk. There are many of those fosters that have also become lost in the system without a clear plan for transferring of ownership. I have personally offered to bring a professional high-volume team of spay-neuter into Front Street by using their veterinary hospital without any success. Thinking that perhaps Front Street didn't want to use their own veterinary hospital, I also supported bringing SNIP's mobile clinic as a proven cost-effective and long-term solution, yet the city continues to reject these opportunities. And in a recent development, it is concerning that the city has contracted spay-neuter services which appears to overlook California Veterinary Medical Board regulations, again exposing Sacramento to legal liability. If these preventable issues aren't addressed, the city will face mounting costs, not just in sheltering animals, but possibly in lawsuits too. I urge you to please prioritize responsible, legal, and effective solutions before it's too late, not only for the city of Sacramento, but in an effort to save as many animals' lives as possible, and I thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Falcone. Following Susan is Carolina Flores, then Alfonso.
Alfonso's gone.
Okay, Carolina, and I don't see, I don't see movement. Does Susan, do you want to speak, Susan?
Is there someone, you said somebody?
Susan Falcone, then Carolina. I don't, okay, so Carolina.
I boy, I boy, I boy.
And Alfonso's not here, so following Carolina is Jared Hill.
Good morning, stars. It's a pleasure to be here with you. For those of you that are LSS, limited Spanish-speaking, I'm going to say it in Spanish first and then in English. Thank you for this opportunity.
Carolina, will you, will you start over so I can make sure your timer is correct?
Could you tell me when it's two minutes up for the Spanish?
Do you want me to put four minutes on, or do you want to do two and two?
No, no, you have to tell me, because I'm, I'm going on one idea after the other.
You've got it.
The third, and the anima is there.
Thank you, I'll let you know when two minutes is up.
Estoy aquí para poner la queja, y nuestra preocupación tocante los ataques criminales contra los vendedores ambulantes mexicanos, inmigrantes indocumentados. Ustedes no han hecho nada. Yo estoy al punto de buscar alguna servicio legal para ponerlos a ustedes responsables de estos criminales. Por qué? Porque la gente que está atacando a nuestros inmigrantes son code enforcement staff y policía. En, en los vídeos se ve, un señor, se, tenía un moreton de la policía que lo atacó a él. Ustedes son responsables del city council. ¿Para qué no tenemos a ustedes si nadie está haciendo nada? Esta acción es criminal. Esta acción es su responsabilidad, y si no hacen nada, no, no, hay otro recurso de hacer, comenzar un movimiento contra ustedes o para ustedes hacer algo para parar esta acción de su equipo, de sus departamentos. Entonces, por eso, por favor, le pido. Tenemos algunas recomendaciones, lo voy a decir. Ramon Alanderos, nuestra fundadora, es, no pudo venir hoy, y queremos, hay unas soluciones para ayudar a los vendedores ambulantes. Pongan un área donde va a ser para los vendedores. Los vendedores van, en la ciudad, algunos lados, o más, uno, dos, un espacio donde pueden, los vendedores están allí, pueden lavar, pueden usar los excusados, pueden tirar, este, lo sanitario, lo basura. Y el otro es tener, proveer unidad en la comunidad y la vecindad. Los vecinos no saben de lo que están pasando, lo están luchando los vendedores, y ellos tienen que ser conscientes. Ellos, los vendedores, están protegiendo las comunidades, las vecinidades donde ellos están trabajando. Y mutuamente es una relación que se puede establecer muy bien, pero no cuando ustedes vienen a arrestarlos, tirar sus comida, quebrar sus carritos, ay, Dios mío, es un desmadre.
Ms. Flores, your two minutes is complete, I'll put two more minutes on. Yes, please.
English, wonderful, I was having so much fun. Okay, Beneath the Waters Foundation, I'm Director of Communications, and I'm, there are a few steps that we think that we should achieve, this anti-immigrant fervor of the vendors, the ambulance, I have to mix my English and Spanish. The street vendors, who are California residents, are being attacked by people that are in your company, your company, code enforcement, your company, policemen. There's videos, there's ten videos online that you can see where the street vendors have been assaulted, there's crimes that are committed against them, and who's protecting them? Not you, not the police. And this violates the agreement between the country, U.S. and Mexico, that United States would protect the Mexican nationals working here. We ask promote unity, we ask designated vending zone and community building, and there are being organized meetings where the, both the neighborhoods and the vendors get a chance to meet and talk about the same struggles and the same goals that they have. We think that it would make better city governments. The raising awareness, the empathy and the understanding is gonna happen when you educate the community about what's going on. And I really believe that these immigrant street vendors are contributing immensely to the economy here in Sacramento. They don't have stores with great big neon signs and play teams that are doing nationally, but they are vital parts of the community. They are part of the urban landscape, and you are not aware of it, and I am sorry, that's your loss, but we have to protect them, you have to protect them, and I hold you, each of you, responsible for protecting the street vendors. This is a crime. We're getting out of this corruption scandal, right? Well, you know what? This does not paint a very good picture about us nationally or internationally, and I hope that you understand that we are trying to do what we can to help you. With the Department of Justice, we hope to be able to find ways to stop this crime because nobody's here doing anything about it. Thank you so much, I appreciate your attention and your support.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Jared Hill, then Anna Arlando, and then Elise Menez. We have three more speakers.
Good evening, council. Welcome, to those of you new on the diocese this election term, and good to see those of you who have spoken here a number of times before. I am one of ten of the core member applicants who won a right to dispensary license a year ago, almost a year ago, about thirty days from now, it'll be a year, we were awarded a one-year extension of time to get our dispensary open. Prior to that, the reason my company and team needed the extension was because our building in your district, Mr. Dickinson, District Two, at fifteen-eleven Del Paso, the old Casabella Furniture Galleria, Shane Curry's building, burned down while we had it under contract to purchase it and open up there in the check-cashing place, and then expend- to purchase it and open up there in the check-cashing place and then expand our vision, our goal for the avenue there in the rest of that building. So at that time, we requested more time from the council, even though Ms. Kaplan is not here at the moment. I'm sure those of you who were remember that while the one-year extension was given, it was intimated that, hey, those people might need more than a one-year extension of time. Because of the way that this thing has gone for us, this has been quite a journey. It took us almost two and a half years out of the three years initially granted to get open, to find a building. Some of the things, the roadblocks that we've been faced with have been access to real estate that's appropriately zoned, access to viable financing beyond not just the support we get from the core program and OCM, but finding viable partners, people that are part of this core program, starting out as mom and pops, are very limited resources and been faced with a lot of predatory deals. So I'm just here today to solicit your continued support. We are really close at another location just up the street from there, 1625.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete.
It's been able to speak with you guys.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm Anna Arrelando. Following Anna is Elise. I don't see any movement. Anna, Elise? Okay. So, Mayor, we move on to council comments, ideas, questions, and AB 123 reports.
There's another one, yeah.
Councilmember Dickinson.
Three announcements. The first is California Chapter of the Council of American Islamic Relations, who we all know as CARE, is pleased to announce its 18th Annual Capitol Iftar, which is a celebration of community and interfaith understanding during the holy month of Ramadan, and that will be next Tuesday, March 11th, beginning at 5:15 p.m. at the Del Paso Art Gallery, which is located at 1616 Del Paso Boulevard. All are welcome to join in the event, breaking fast together and fostering dialogue and building bridges across diverse communities. Second, I wanted to mention the Youth Opportunity Alert, which will take place here at City Hall on March 8th, so Saturday, from 9:00 in the morning to noon. It's an opportunity to discover stipend-based programs, internships, and seasonal career employment. So, among other things, you can get a professional headshot if you come to the Resource Fair, and we invite all to join in that this Saturday as well. And then, thirdly, the Sacramento Building Trades is hosting a hands-on Union Trade Awareness Career Fair. That will be March 28th, from 10:00 in the morning to 2:00 p.m. at 9701 Big Horn Boulevard, so toward the south part of the county, in Elk Grove, and that's an opportunity to learn about apprenticeship opportunities, connect with representatives of various building trades, and discover potential pathways to stable and fulfilling careers. So for those who are interested in the trades, there's an opportunity. Thank you, Mayor, and Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much. Please join us and the Southland Park Neighborhood Association, Zeeburg Park Neighbors, Del Paso Trail enthusiasts, Pocket Area Churches Together, the City of Sacramento Youth Parks and Community Enrichment Department, and Parks Commissioner Joe Flores in my office this Saturday to put in sweat equity to clean up the Floron Road and Pocket Road section of the Del Rio Trail. Once again, that's this Saturday, March the 8th at 9:00 a.m. We'd love to see you there. And then it's that time of year, again, for you to mark your calendars for the Easter Egg Hunt at Garcha Bend Park in the Pocket Neighborhood. It will take place on April the 5th. You can arrive at 10:00 a.m. if you want to picture with the Easter Bunny, and be sure to bring your Easter baskets and all those eggs filled with treats. We'll start at 10:30 sharp, and be on the lookout for the golden egg for a special surprise. With goodies galore, there's plenty of fun to go around for everyone, so bring the kids out. More information can be found on my Facebook and Instagram page. Hope to see you there.
Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you. This Sunday, we're going to have the District 1 Women in Natomas Small Business Celebration. It's going to be 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the North Natomas Community Center. It's a showcase of a lot of our small, women-owned businesses, so come on out and join us. And then mark your calendars for Saturday, March 15th, at the North Lake Community Park, which is the new community as you head to the airport. It is windy out there, so we are having our District 1 Kite Fun Fly Event from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So bring your kids, your grandkids out, fly some kites. We will provide them, and the kids can also make them.
Councilmember Ring.
Thank you. I just wanted to make an announcement. This Saturday, from 9:00 to 1:00 o'clock at John Still Drive, 2250, we are going to be planting trees and cleaning up the neighborhood. There's going to be bike repairs as well, B-SABA, and so encouraging folks to come out to that. There'll be information and resources and lots of fun, so bring your gloves and be ready to plant lots of trees. And then I just wanted to give a shout out to my staff. Samantha Lee Seathong, she's actually getting married this Sunday, and I'm excited for her own wedding, and just wanted to give her and Andy a shout out. That has been a long time coming, and I'm super excited for her. And then lastly, I wanted just to remind folks that our annual District 8 Community Conversation is next Saturday from 10:00 to 1:00 at Union House Elementary School. We're going to have various departments there. We're going to talk about the great work that's been happening in District 8 and the work that we still have ahead. Would love for folks to be there. Food will be there, lots of activities as well. It's a really great annual event for community members to get an update about what's happening in the district, and those are my updates.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Getta.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I just wanted to encourage folks to join us for the College Glen Little League Opening Day and Parade. As we always do, we start at the Rayleigh's on Folsom Boulevard and then drive out to College Glen neighborhood at 8:00 a.m. for opening ceremonies at 8:30 a.m. And appreciate everyone joining us out there. We're also going to be dedicating the softball field. So thanks, everyone, for who's worked together, all the parents, to start our first softball team in College Glen. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. So the business of this meeting is complete. We do have a special meeting for the purpose of a closed session after this meeting. We do have a quorum here in council. I do not have any public comment on either of these agenda items. We've got two items that we will discuss in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 to discuss matters pertaining to pending litigation. Megan White versus City of Sacramento, United States District Court for the Eastern District of California, case number 2:21-CV-02211-JAM-DB. Item number two is pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 for a matter pertaining to negotiation with recognized employee organizations. Sacramento City Exempt Employees Association, Sacramento Police Officers Association, International Union of Operating Engineers, Stationery Engineers, Local 39, Sacramento Area Firefighters, Local 522, Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local 447, Auto Marine and Specialty Painters, Local 1176, Western Council of Engineers, International Association of Machinists and Aerospace Workers. The purpose is to confer with the city's chief negotiators, Shelley Banks-Robinson, Aaron Donato, and Tim Davis. So, Mayor, you may adjourn to closed session.
Thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session.